Welcome, everybody, to our 5:30 PM workshop. Tonight, we have the CRTPO, Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization 101. And you guys are here to show us or teach us a little bit about what you guys do. And I was lucky enough to be able to come down and sit through a lot of those meetings. And I learned a lot. And I still didn't know what was going on about half the time because there was a there's a lot of stuff to learn, a lot of smart people down there. But Neil, are you gonna you gonna get up and introduce yourself and introduce everybody here, or how we want to do this?
Yeah, well, good evening, Mayor and Town Council members. It's always a pleasure to come down to Indian Trail and share information with you all. We do have a PowerPoint presentation. And while we're pulling that up, I'll just introduce some of my colleagues. So we have Travis Johnson, who's our transportation planner with CRTPO. Jarell Leonard, he's our transit planner with CRTPO. And Judy Dillard, she's our public engagement planner with CRTPO. So we're going to move through some slides with you all this evening. We realize you have a town council meeting immediately following this, so we aren't going to take too long. But we do want to provide you all with an introduction to our organization and then a focus on the memorandum of understanding. That's something that the CRTPO board recently took action on, as well as, you know, how projects go through our project development process and how they eventually get funded. So that's really what's setting up this roadmap on your screens tonight. I'll provide an overview of what a metropolitan planning organization is and what specifically what CRTPO is. As I mentioned, I'll talk to you all about what's going on with our memorandum of understanding. Travis will give you all an overview of our CRTPO planning products. Jarell will talk to you about the discretionary grants program and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. And then I'll close it out with some additional CRTPO member benefits and project examples. And then we can take any questions or have a discussion at the end. So I'll jump right into it. So what is a metropolitan planning organization? This is a federally designated transportation planning agency that any urban area in the United States with a population of greater than 50,000 is required to have. So throughout the U.S., there are over 400 metropolitan planning organizations. And these began initially with the Federal Aid Highway Act in 1962 that required a urban transportation planning process. And that was formalized in the 1970s with the creation of MPOs in these urban areas to ensure that the planning process was proceeding as envisioned with that initial legislation in 1962. So what is the CRTPO? Well, we are the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, and we are the federally designated metropolitan planning organization for the Charlotte urban area. We do have a three-county planning area that contains all of Iredell, all of Mecklenburg, and really the western urbanized portion of Union. We go, you know, obviously from Stallings, Indian Trail, Monroe, Waxah, all the way out to Marshville. But there are some rural portions of Union County that are in the Rocky River Planning Organization. And all of that is determined by the census boundaries for urban areas. And then the funding is contingent upon the implementation of the federally mandated 3C transportation planning process that is continuing, cooperative, and comprehensive. And we weave that 3C planning process through most of what the major initiatives that we do. So we adopted our first strategic plan in 2021, and that gave us the mission and the vision here. I won't read those, but that, again, forms the basis for a lot of our required initiatives and some of the other things that we pursue to advance transportation planning throughout our planning area. Here's a map of the planning area. It's, you know, 1,500 square miles. We have a population of 1.5 million residents throughout the planning area. Out of the 20 MPOs in North Carolina, we have the greatest population. So we're made up of 21 cities and towns. And then Mayor Cohn and Councilmember also Brooks are serve on our CRTPO board. Todd Hunsinger serves on our technical coordinating committee. That's kind of the staff arm that develops these recommendations to the CRTPO board. And then also on the CRTPO board, we have our North Carolina Board of Transportation Members, as well as the Metropolitan Transit Commission. And I like this graphic on the right-hand side. It really kind of conveys where CRTPO is relative to the other agencies that are involved in transportation. Obviously, the federal legislation and the federal funds originate with the Federal Highway Administration. And then a lot of times, those funding, those funds will pass through NCDOT. But we really serve as that conduit between our member jurisdictions and NCDOT. And we also receive federal direct allocation funds in our discretionary program that Jarell will talk to you all about in a few minutes here. So I do want to move into talking about our memorandum of understanding. But before that, I'll just pause and see if there's any questions about MPOs or, you know, the formation of CRTPO.
I believe we move on.
All right, I'll keep rolling. So the reason why we're talking about the memorandum of understanding is, and I'll get into this in some of the slides coming up, but we've recently, the CRTPO board recently adopted a revised memorandum of understanding. And Todd asked us to kind of weave this into our 101 to really educate your town council as to, you know, what action was taken by the CRTPO board, what action is being requested of all of our member jurisdictions. So moving into an overview of that, you know, the MOU for us, it outlines the policy, structure, membership, and the roles of our organization. It is the governing document of our MPO, and it is federally required for any MPO to have a memorandum of understanding. And that's an agreement between NCDOT, our member jurisdictions, and the Federal Highway Administration. So the current MOU that's in place, you know, with all of the signatures from the memorandum from our member jurisdictions was endorsed by the MPO in July of 2013. Its effective date, when we got all of those signatures together, got the signature of the governor of North Carolina, and then got concurrence from Federal Highway Administration, was October 10th. So that's kind of the period that we're in with this revised MOU right now, where our board last month endorsed the revised MOU, and now we're in that signature gathering phase for our member jurisdictions. So what's triggering the update? It's the release of the census data and specifically the urban area census data in December of 2022. And Federal Highway Administration uses urban areas as a basis for developing the MPO planning areas. And the release of the urban area data coincides with an MOU evaluation every 10 years. So we did undertake that urban area evaluation, and what we found was that the urban area in Charlotte did not expand. So we were allowed to keep our current CRTPO planning area intact from that current MOU. And what also that means is that there's no new member jurisdictions that needed to be added. So we technically didn't need to amend our MOU, but it was recommended by our CRTPO board leadership to open that document up through a transparent process to ensure that it continues to reflect the principles of our of our planning area and our MPO. So, you know, following the release of the urban area data in 2023, we had some activities around the MOU update in 2023. So we formed a MPO board subcommittee that was going to review the terms of the MOU and suggest changes. This committee met twice, and then it was paused at the recommendation of several of the committee members and the board to retain independent counsel. So we did rely on the Charlotte City Attorney because we are City of Charlotte employees, but members of our board thought that it would make sense to also have independent legal counsel taking a look at these documents, this document, and the terms within it to make sure that we have an unbiased opinion. And then we had several changes at our CRTPO board through the municipal election process. We let, we lost our board chair, you know, following the November 2023 elections, and several of the committee members. We did retain an independent counsel, Shah Khan Law, to help us with the technical terms within the MOU in late 2023. So and then in 2024, the Shah Khan Law reviewed the technical provisions within the current MOU and developed recommendations in a memorandum. The board chair reconvened the MOU subcommittee in April to provide an overview of the attorney's findings. And the subcommittee's findings were, you know, a consensus by all the subcommittee members to revise the annual jurisdiction cost share. And I'll get into the details of that in a minute. Consensus by the members to approve the technical revisions within the MOU that were developed by Shah Khan Law. And then three of the four subcommittee members agreed to consensus on the weighted voting provisions. And that's another topic that I'll cover in detail in the slides here in the next couple of minutes. So moving into the cost share, the cost share that's within our 2013 MOU utilized a unique methodology for each county. This was a compromise that was made when we integrated Iredell County into the MPO's planning area. Before 2013, it was it was just Mecklenburg and Union, and our name was MUMPO, Mecklenburg-Union-MPO. So we had to change our name in 2013, also had to bring in Iredell County and those jurisdictions because of the urban area expansion from the 2010 census. So because of that, we had a unique methodology for determining the cost share within each of these three counties for our jurisdiction. So in Iredell, we use future annexation boundary agreements. Mecklenburg, we use a mix of corporate limits and spheres of influence. And then Union, it was a mix of corporate limits and extraterritorial jurisdictions. So the challenge is, is this is complicated calculation. Iredell, future annexation boundary agreements are no longer in place. This methodology was difficult to understand or, you know, to explain how we calculated this cost share. And then the shift of the annual cost share burden from counties to jurisdictions. So using the ETJ, we were, you know, improperly assessing municipalities and not assessing counties enough based upon the residents that live in unincorporated areas. So the recommendation was to use the decennial census figures for counties and jurisdictions in a pro-rata share for each jurisdiction relative to the planning area population. Staff endorsed this because it's transparent and it's a uniform methodology, and it uses accepted population totals and avoids estimation of population figures. So this is a slide of the Union County municipalities, and I'll just kind of walk you through all the different numbers here. The numbers on the left-hand side are the 2010 census on the left-hand side for each of the jurisdictions, the percentage of the population of those jurisdictions, and then the cost share. And this is the current cost share that you're paying now. And then the numbers on the right, in the green, are what we're proposing from the 2020 census in terms of a cost share based upon the 2020 census population. So looking at Indian Trail in 2010, you all had a population of about 33,500. That was 2.7% of the the planning area population, so you paid an annual cost share of 18,400. You've grown in population after the 2020 census, almost 40,000 residents now. But yet, only taking the municipal limits and not the any of the ETJ or the spheres of influence, you're actually a slightly smaller percentage of the the planning area population. So the net effect of that is that your annual cost share will go down from 18,400 to 17,800. So most of the jurisdictions, not all of them, some of them have experienced rapid growth, and they have a relatively minor increase, but most of the jurisdictions have experienced a decrease in their annual dues, and then the counties have experienced an increase because, again, we're we're assessing the counties based upon residents that live in those unincorporated areas that were picked up by a sphere of influence or an ETJ before. I feel like I presented a lot of information in a short amount of time, so I'm just going to pause here. I have a few more slides about the MOU, and then we'll get into the rest of the 101 session.
Any questions? No? All right, Neil, you're doing a real, you must be doing a great job answering all these questions.
All right, well, keep going. And feel free to interrupt me if you have a burning question. So this is just going to recap the the couple of meetings that led up to the vote on the MOU, because that was a significant vote. You know, it sets the course for this document over the next 10 years. So at the May CRTPO board meeting, we reviewed the annual cost share calculation and the recommendation, you know, within the revised MOU to move to a pro-rata share and the technical revisions. Board members were encouraged to review the proposed revisions and contact the independent counsel with questions and concerns. At the June 26 CRTPO board meeting, information was provided to the board members regarding the recommended MOU revision, outcomes of the weighted vote. So this was a spreadsheet that articulated any time there was a split vote. What was the outcome in terms of, you know, the jurisdictions that were voting one way, the jurisdictions that were voting in opposition, and what that population was? So that was a request of the some of the board members to provide that information and the recommended cost share methodology. So once again, the board members were encouraged to contact leadership with concerns prior to the July meeting where we were to go to a vote. And then moving into the weighted vote revision, this was probably the most contentious piece of of the MOU revision. But, you know, this part here, this really is all good news. All members in good standing receive at least one vote, and good standing has paid current fiscal year dues. Waxah will increase from one weighted vote to two weighted votes because their town population now exceeds 20,000 residents. This is consistent with a provision in the current and past MOUs where any jurisdiction with a population of greater than 20,000 receives two weighted votes. A new provision within this revised MOU is that any jurisdiction with a population of greater than 50,000 would increase from two to three weighted votes. And so that affects Huntersville, Mooresville, and the three counties. And again, the three counties, that's the area outside of any municipal limit. They all exceed 50,000 in those unincorporated areas. So the net effect of that is the total weighted vote increased from the current 68 to 74 in the revised MOU with these proposed revisions. Charlotte remains at 31 votes. So what happens there is their total vote percentage decreased from 45 to 42%. So what that means is that they'll need additional municipalities or jurisdictions with, you know, two and three weighted votes to to carry a motion. And this was the board action at the July 17 meeting. So endorse revisions to the the cost share, endorse the text revisions to the MOU document as recommended by the legal counsel, endorsing the revisions to the weighted voting provision within the draft MOU, and endorsing the revisions approved by the CRTPO board and release it for approval by member agencies. So A, B, and D passed unanimously. As some of you are aware, there is some contention around the weighted voting provision. We did have three of our voting members at that meeting that night vote in opposition to that, but the the motion still carried. So that's really where we are with with the MOU, you know, with all of the provisions. And the updates to that did pass on July 17. So this is where we are now with the revised MOU is being circulated for signatures for all member jurisdictions elected bodies. It is recommended by our independent legal counsel that this is placed on an agenda and that the board action is taken and the chief elected official and the clerk sign it. But we have had some member jurisdictions that have just had their mayor or chief elected officials official sign that along with their clerk, and that's that's perfectly okay, too. So the governor must execute the revised MOU before it can be submitted to FHWA to be considered the current MOU. So we have given our member jurisdictions the deadline, and this is coming from CRTPO board leadership, of September 13th. And then we'll submit that to NCDOT to get the governor or the secretary's signature, and then we'll submit the whole thing to FHWA. And hopefully, we'll have our revised MOU as our current MOU. My guess would be late October, early November would be aggressive, recognizing there's all this paper pushing that we're doing. So sometimes that takes time. Again, I know I've talked a lot. I do want to just pause here and just see if there's any questions about the memorandum of understanding.
I understand better now.
Good.
Mayor, go ahead. Neil, hopefully, this is an appropriate time for this question. Real quick, for people that are watching on social media and they see numbers, cost share, and $18,000 here and there, will explain what are the benefits of being a member of CRTPO?
Sure. And this is covered later on in the presentation, but, you know, we work with your your staff here to to identify recommended projects from your local plans. And we, you know, again, work through a collaborative, comprehensive, and continuing process to prioritize needs from throughout the region and identify projects that can be funded, given the available funding. We also have, as I mentioned, discretionary funds that come to us directly. We have an annual project call for our member jurisdictions. And I know Indian Trail has availed themselves of these discretionary funds over the past couple of years. And that's for planning, like your mobility plan or capital projects, you know, like like some of the sidewalk projects and multimodal projects Indian Trail has pursued. We also, you know, provide a lot of technical assistance through an alignment evaluation program. If you all have a roadway alignment that might have changed due to development or just a new roadway alignment that makes sense from a connectivity standpoint, we have engineers on staff that can work with your staff to to help engineer that. We have a traffic count program. We can assist, you know, if you all are in a public engagement campaign about a transportation project, we have public engagement staff that that work closely with with your staff. I'm probably forgetting some of those things, but that is covered later on in the presentation.
Very good. Any other questions? Neil, as usual, yes.
Like Neil said, it was recommended for this MOU to come to the board. If you if you don't care about voting for this, I won't bring it up in September, but I would like to have a head shake or not that the mayor and the town clerk can go and execute this now, or we can bring it to the board in September. But I'd like for y'all to make a decision tonight about that, so I know how to move forward. And that's why that's why it was presented, because it's recommended to the board approve it if so choose.
You want a head nod? Is that what it's been?
Yeah, I want a head nod. If y'all are okay to go ahead and let the mayor execute this, or do you want to take it to the board, bring it to the board in September to do an official approval? Either way, I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, you want you want it right now?
Yes.
Okay.
What's he asking for?
I'm asking if you're okay with the mayor to go ahead and execute, sign the MOU that he just presented now, or do you want it to be officially on a board agenda for September to approve? Either way, it doesn't matter to me. But if y'all like to be official, that's fine. We can wait till September.
I'm gonna let Clarence speak for this. Me personally, I don't know why we wouldn't go ahead and do it, but.
Yeah, so just want some guidance on that.
I would just recommend that we go ahead and do it.
I would, too. I mean, anybody else want to pitch in?
We had the majority vote in the last meeting.
No, he said do it. Yeah, do it now. Do you want to? All right, Crystal, all right, we're good. We got a good, thank you. All right.
All right, well, any other last question questions about the MOU before I turn it over to Travis? He's going to give us an overview of our our different planning products.
I don't think so. Now, I want to appreciate it. You always do a great job, and you do a great job at the meetings. And I didn't mention Judy sitting back there in the back, who's an Indian Trail resident. And she's, it's the secretary, is she, or Judy, what is your official job with the CRTPO?
Public participation, same as Abby.
Oh, okay, community, public community. And you do a wonderful job, wonderful job there, too. And I'm proud that you're from Indian Trail, so I'm I'm proud that Indian Trail can claim you in the CRTPO. Neil, thank you.
All right, well, with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Travis Johnson, and he'll give us an overview of planning products.
Hey, everyone, Travis Johnson. Thank you for having us out here tonight. We're going to go over some of the planning products the CRTPO does before I hand it off to Jarell, who'll go into discretionary projects. The CRTPO does a lot more than just funding projects. We do a lot of planning studies. We're involved with air quality, conformity. So the, these are examples of the planning products that we regularly work with, the Unified Planning Work Program, think that as our budget. That's essentially what we're going to do in a fiscal year, so that identifies the tasks we're going to do, how much money we're going to spend on it, and then the additional tasks, anything we plan to put in for the year goes into that Unified Planning Program. The Comprehensive Transportation Plan, Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and Transportation Improvement Program, I have slides for coming up, and that's essentially the way projects get funded for large-scale initiatives. Public Involvement Plan is how we engage the public. We set standards for minimum contact times, different processes to follow for contacting different groups and populations. We also have Transportation Conformity Analysis, which is ensures that the CRTPO plans conform with the State Implementation Plan, or the SIP, which is set forth by the state of North Carolina and then the clean air standards. And then also, there's a congestion management process, which is a systematic approach to require transportation management areas or TMAs that provide information to transportation systems and find alternative ways to alleviate congestion and enhance mobility for people in the planning area. So we manage a lot of different planning products, but I'm going to focus now on the process that gets a project from the idea phase into development and in the street. So we're going to start with the idea, which is your local plans. We'll talk about the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, or the CTP. We'll go into the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, the MTP, which we're currently engaged in the 2055 MTP. And then we'll talk about the tip, which we currently are doing the prioritization 7.0, which is the development of our our next tip. So it all starts with your plans. It's one of the most important things is that you have up-to-date plans that are adopted by your communities that identify your local needs, so that way we know that there's public support for an enhancement or a project and that we know that your community would like to see something happen. This is essential as we work it through the process so that we know that there's been public engagement, we know that the community has been heard, and then it allows us to show the local need as we work with the projects as they go through the the process to development process. So once you get a project approved, then we always recommend that you then make sure that our comprehensive transportation plan reflects those needs. So the comprehensive transportation plan is essentially, it's the master plan for the entire planning area. It's our dream document that's not fiscally constrained, so there's no restrictions on the amount of money that we plan on having in this plan. So this is if if we had infinity money tomorrow and we could fix all of the problems, we would do everything in the comprehensive transportation plan, and it covers all modes. And so it looks at not just roadway, bicycle, pedestrian, transit. And so this is then where we, you take your local plans, ensure that it aligns with what the comprehensive transportation plan shows, because this is that multimodal approach where then we get projects for our metropolitan transportation plan. So from this stage, also, we're working on updating the comprehensive transportation plan with NCDOT to do a CTP 2.0, so you might hear more about that in the coming months as we make sure that it properly reflects all the essential steps for a comprehensive transportation plan. So once you have your local plan, you make sure that CTP is up to date and it matches your local needs. And ideally, then, those plans are when we pull for the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which currently we're engaged in the development of the 2055 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And so this plan is a fiscally constrained project list. So what that means is that we have to, we have to have the, or the revenue has to be anticipated in order for a project to be put into this list. And these projects are typically submitted from the CTP or that Comprehensive Transportation Plan. So this is fiscally constrained and is updated every four years, and it considers all modes of transportation in this plan. It's required to access federal funds for transportation projects, and it establishes policy for transportation improvement. So why is the Metropolitan Transportation Plan important? Because it helps establish a vision for transportation throughout the region. It helps us to identify needs and deficiencies in the system, and it recommends specific projects and strategies for for areas in order to see improvement. It also creates an action plan for implementation, and it helps shapes progress, our policy and program decisions for the region. As part of the 2055 MTP, we incorporate goals and objectives. We collect data research and do an existing conditions report. We come up with different scenarios for growth and how we see communities growing and different enhancements that can happen. We come up with that revenue forecast based upon data from NCDOT to estimate how much money should be available. And so again, we work through all these different stages to identify projects to then incorporate into the plan prior to it then being submitted to the tip. So currently, in the 2055 MTP, we kicked that off in early 2024, and so we're in the early phases of this process development. We've, we just recently finished a public comment period for the goals and objectives and then collected data for needs. But as you can see here, we're going, this process will continue until 2026. So there's lots of opportunities to stay involved and get involved. So as we announce things and as we share information with you, please share this information with your residents, because we want to make sure that all of your goals are properly reflected in this plan. So for phase one, Phase One of Public Engagement, we incorporated a webpage, social media, and in-person events. The 2055 MTP page had over 2,700 views. We distributed special newsletters about this information in English and in Spanish. And on our website, we have it set up to where you can use an online translator to translate the page information up into 10 different languages. the page information up into 10 different languages. As part of the first phase of public engagement, we did a 30-day public comment period on the goals and objectives, and we were able to use Facebook Boost to get it up to 26,926 impressions through 20 Facebook posts and 13 X formerly Twitter posts. We also attended 10 community events and festivals to collect feedback, and we are anticipating, or we're working now to do an equity focus group from August 21st to August 30th, to do small groups, to engage directly with environmental justice communities. And the project team is working with these communities to have important conversations about the goals and objectives, community needs, and then key plan elements. As part of this, we did the public, we did a public comments period from June 3rd to July 3rd. We had over 274 participants and over 690 comments on the goals and objectives. And what we found from that was most people seemed to agree with what the goals and objectives said. They either agreed or strongly agreed, and so based upon that feedback, we did not feel as if a major modification needed to happen to the six goals that were in the plan. And in addition to that, we had an interactive map where we asked residents to tell us where were their issues in their communities, where did they want to see improvements, and we had over 301 pins placed. And so this data will be used as guidance as part of the MTP development, to be shared also with our member jurisdictions, to help identify projects to then be submitted into the MTP. Also, we're going to receive an existing conditions report, and so this will give us a good reflection on the status of our community. This will be a highly graphic-oriented illustrative document that'll be easy to read, and it'll be, again, an important resource as we identify where we want our community to go by 2055. So after you have the idea of your plan, you get in the CTP, you get it submitted into the MTP, so it's scheduled for the Horizon Year, we think the funding's going to be available, it is those projects that then will get submitted into the Transportation Improvement Program, or also called the TIP. So the TIP and the STIP, which is the State Transportation Improvement Program, is a process that was directed by Strategic Transportation Investment Law in North Carolina. So that defines the funding categories, what types of projects that be submitted, and then project guidelines. And so this covers a 10-year period. The first five years are referred to as the delivery STIP, and so essentially, what that means is that is referred to as the committed list, and so that means that the projects are anticipated to have, committed, and it should have funding. The projects in the final five years is referred to as the uncommitted, and so these projects that are in the second five years are the next to receive funding, but then typically, they will be re-ranked as the TIP process, because it happens on a regular basis. So the CRTPO adopts the TIP and coordinates with NC DOT, and this typically happens on a two-year development cycle, and it can happen no later than every four years. So the TIP is developed in accordance with the STI law, or SD Act, and it requires coordination of not only our member jurisdictions, but NC DOT. So currently, we are in NC DOT prioritization 7.0, and so this is a data-driven process to evaluate which projects will be then developed into the TIP, and the results guide programming of the TIP and the STIP. And so this is what we're planning for the years of 2026 to 2035. Projects that are submitted are broken up into three separate categories. You have your statewide mobility, which this is 100% quantitative from NC DOT, so this is ranked from the NC DOT spot office, and these projects all rank against each other across the entire state, so you have projects in our region competing with projects in the Asheville region and competing against projects in the Wilmington region. After that, projects in the regional impact, which are, compete locally against other, against two NC DOT divisions, and this is made up of 70% of a quantitative score, but then we have the ability to influence the final score up to 30%, utilizing something called local input points, so this is where we apply our local preference. The CRTPO is able to submit 15% of that 30%, and then NC DOT submits the second half of that 30%. And the same thing goes for division needs, where 50% of that score is quantitative, but then we can assign local input points or the local perspective with half going to the NPO and half going to the NC DOT. Inside this plan includes highway, bicycle, pedestrian, transit, rail, and aviation, and all these plans will then go together, and then that will create that draft TIP and STIP. So public involvement occurs throughout this entire process, so ideally, there's been a lot of public involvement that got it from your plan to the CTP, then through the MTP, there was public engagement, and then through the public involvement process for prioritization, there are multiple public comment periods. In order to submit the projects, there's a public comment period. For regional impact projects, we just concluded our public response for our local input point assignment. We're bringing that to the board later this month to receive feedback on those local input points that we have assigned. And we will open up a public comment period also for the division needs projects, which again, is that 50/50 split of quantitative score versus local inputs. Right now, we have that tentatively scheduled of a P subcommittee made up of TCC members and transportation staff members from the region. We will bring that for information for a public comment period in October. Again, we'll encourage you to share this information with your citizens. We will then, after October 18th and November 1st, we will then bring it back to the TCC for a recommendation to the board in November, and then when the board, if the board decides to adopt that and approve that, then we will submit the division needs projects with the regional impact projects altogether to then create the draft STIP, which will then be released in January of 2026, or 2025, sorry. If you want to know what's in the current STIP, you can scan this QR code. We also have this on our website, and so this is everything. It's previous prioritizations, it's maintenance projects, so you can go there and click the dot, and it'll tell you the Horizon Year, the Horizon Year, when it should start construction, it should give you the project estimate and give you the project IDs and names. So if you're ever wondering what is approved, what is currently working, you can always go to our website and you can scan this code as well, but this is what we're currently working with, the draft STIP. So with that, I'm gonna hand it off to talk to, or have Jorrell talk about discretionary grant program, which is another funding mechanism.
Thank you, Travis.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jorrell Leonard, CRTPO. Let's talk about the discretionary grant program. So another implementation to assist our local jurisdictions is the discretionary grant program. It was put in place basically to provide community-level assistance to any of the, our member jurisdictions. Approximately $30 million are allocated and managed annually through the discretionary grant program. As you may see on the right on the slide, there are five sources for the discretionary grant programs, which fall under the auspices of the Discretionary Grant Policy Guide, and Jennifer Stafford on our staff manages that portion of the process. But the point is, the Surface Transportation Block Grant is a flexible program to assist with any type of small, small projects that would be useful for any type of community of various sites within our planning area. The transportation alternatives focuses on bike and ped projects, such as sidewalks or greenways. The congestion mitigation air quality, that's following guidelines with the Clean Air Act, but is also of use for our member jurisdictions, including yourselves. The bonus allocation comes from federal as well as state sources, and it comes out, it varies. This year, there is not actually a bonus allocation, but it does occur based on what overflows from the federal as well as the state overflow grants. The carbon reduction program, that's another program that is also of use for you. Any discretionary grant program does require a 20% to 35% local match, so just FYI. So the discretionary grant program falls under those five categories as you see on the screen. Highway, which includes roadway projects. Bicycle and pedestrian, which includes greenway, sidewalk, or safety projects for non-automotive users. Transit, including buses or paratransit vehicles. Air quality, to reduce congestion, to assist with any type of overflow, such as would lead to stalling vehicles on highways, or bagups, or high volumes. And then the final category on the right is transportation planning, which is the regional transportation, parking studies, any land use plans, as well as multimodal plans. On this, on this slide, you can see the current existing projects that exist in the Indian Trail area that are in the State Transportation Improvement, also known as STIP, and the numbers are in the left, the left column. And in the center column, you'll see the names of the projects, as well as the locations general projects are, are within the greater Indian Trail area. And the column on the right is the current phase of said projects. On this slide, it's showing you the projects that have been awarded directly to the town of Indian Trail over the previous five years, and on the left-hand side, you see the award amounts on that leftmost column. And the middle column, or should I say the second column, it is the project type, and in the far right-hand column, it shows you the project name as well as the location. FYI, there is a transportation master plan that will reopen for a second, second round of comment on Monday, August 19th, and it's for the town of Indian Trail. On this slide, it's showing you the schedule and timeline for the discretionary program working with junction, or in conjunction with the project oversight committee. The project, the fall call opened yesterday, August 12th, for any applicants. Now, in the second, in the second portion of the timeline, that specifies in the month of October, on October 18th, any community that applies for discretionary grant under the fall call must do some type of pre-submital application no later than October 18th, that's the last day, and October 21st would be the last day any pre-submittal applicable applicants must submit all their materials to be accepted, to be reviewed by the project oversight committee. During the months of November and December, those project oversight committee will review applications that will be referred to the CRTPO Transportation Coordinating Committee, also known as the TCC, as well as the Policy Board. In January, the TCC and the CRTPO Board would review what applications that have been recommended to, from the PLC to them, and in February, action would occur for adoption of said recommended projects. Also, in February, immediately afterwards, a TIP, a TIP amendment, also Transportation Improvement Amendment, would be, would be assigned to said adopted projects, so that they could later be rolled up to, up to the state TIP process to be able to amend that and be fully adopted, and all documentation agreements will occur. Tomorrow, Wednesday, August 14th, there will be an education session held during the CRTPO Transportation Staff Meeting for any pre-submittal applicants to know the fall call process and to be able to follow and abide by it. Another product that CRTPO is working with is the IIJA, also known as the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill, and this main, first product I'm gonna speak about is the RACE Grant, the Rebuilding American Infrastructure and Sustainability and Equity RACE Grant. It has three main, three main areas of focus as a federal grant that CRTPO can assist our membership communities with rural areas, areas with persistent poverty, as well as disadvantaged communities. It's a $274 billion program that rolls out and can be used nationwide, and CRTPO has applied for one RACE Grant. As you can see on the screen, CRTPO was awarded a RACE Grant. It is, it was $5 million, and it's called the SAFER Grant, a regional cross-jurisdictional study to help with making our roads safer. And for further information, it's in the bottom right-hand corner, the domain, the Also, in addition to that, to kind of show you an inset of Union County for your viewing pleasure, basically, this is, this is where the RACE Grant focus upon within the CRTPO planning area, and green is the rural areas that are within the Union County, particularly within the CRTPO area, the area that's drawn in in a bold black line. The areas in orange or yellow, depending on how you may perceive the color, that is the historically disadvantaged communities that are within Union County, and the hatched-in areas are the areas of persistent poverty. So the SAFER Grant that was awarded, that's $5 million, has five main deliverables, as you can see on the screen. SAFER road improvements, accessibility, flexibility for trips and different modes of movement, equity, as well as reconnecting communities for resiliency in long term. Another, another product coming from the IIJ, or the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill, that is a federal grant, is the Safe Streets and Roads for All, also known as SS4A Grant Program. It's a $3 billion grant that has, that has approximately several future rounds. CRTPO is currently applying for that. The main purpose of this grant program is to reduce and eliminate any serious injuries or fatal crashes on our roadway systems throughout our planning area. Now, the main focus of CRTPO's study that we're applying for with the SS4A is to focus on comprehensive safety action plans for, across the region, but also for our member communities who may not have, have those, and it would basically focus on the data, a data analysis approach that would help strengthen your ability, your community's ability to reduce any fatal crashes, whether they're roadways or on roadways, as well as other modes of transportation, but also to identify where those, where those areas may occur more often than not. And also to assist with any type of safety, action, community action, safety plans, such as a Vision Zero Action Plan or other plans, and this is, this is applicable on a regional level, as well as a local jurisdiction membership level, such as Indian Trail. I'm gonna slow down right here and give you all the opportunity, if you have any questions related to that, but that completes my section.
Thank you. Very good. Jorrell, thank you. Neil, thank you, and Travis, thank you. Judy, thank you. All of you are, do a great job.
We do have a few more slides. I can roll through those quickly. I'm not sure how we're doing on time.
Well, I think you got time. You got, you got...
Okay, yeah, I'll go quick. And this gets to Councilmember Alsobrooke's question earlier, you know, what are some of the benefits that member jurisdictions get with, you know, paying the annual dues? So as I mentioned earlier, the alignment evaluation program, if you have cost estimation needs, if you have a project, again, we have two engineers on staff that can assist your staff with preparing planning-level cost estimates. If you need maps prepared with geographic information systems, we also have access to census data and a variety of other transportation data to, where we can work with your staff. Jorrell mentioned those big federal grants that we're availing ourselves of. There's also grant opportunities for local jurisdictions. It's not just at the regional level. We have several staff members that are really in tune with this current federal legislation that we can, again, act as liaisons to your staff. Planning support, if, you know, if you have a mobility plan, anything like that, our staff can serve on that subcommittee, can help you, you know, with public engagement. And then we do have a traffic data program where we make some of our federal discretionary dollars available. If you want to conduct traffic counts along roadway corridors, greenways, sidewalks, we have vendors that can assist us with that, and these are all, again, benefits for our member jurisdictions. I want to close out with some project examples. This really kind of puts our planning products into practice, what Travis talked to us about earlier, and I know this map looks nothing like Old Monroe Road, but I know Old Monroe Road is a high priority for, for the town of Indian Trail, and this is really how it kind of, you know, got funded. So, you know, the process was, it was identified as a need and probably a locally adopted plan surely within Indian Trail, most likely also with, within Union County. CRTPO amended its Comprehensive Transportation Plan to recognize that there's, that need is there, that, you know, Indian Trail staff submitted that project to CRTPO, I believe, in the 2040 MTP, which we were working on back in 2013, and then that became a project in the fiscally constrained project list within the MTP. And if you're thinking back to that stair-step graphic, then we submitted that for a round of prioritization, and it got funded in the Transportation Improvement Program, and I'm aware that that project is in right-of-way acquisition now. I believe it's going to construction in 2026. So these major projects take 10, 15 years sometimes to come to fruition, but this is kind of the process for that. You know, moving into another example, a multi-use path, again, that need needs to be identified in a locally adopted plan, such as a mobility plan. Once that plan has been adopted here locally, staff would bring those amendments to the CRTPO, and we would amend our CTP. And then the funding for that is usually allocated through our annual discretionary grants program that Jorrell was talking about earlier, where we have that fall call, project submittal window that's open now until October 31st. So if you have needs like that in terms of a multi-use path or a small roadway project, your staff should be scheduling those pre-submittal meetings and getting the materials submitted to avail yourselves of our federal discretionary grants. One important thing to remember with greenway projects and anything else that goes through our discretionary program that's different than what I, example one, is that these are federal funds, so it's an 80/20 match. You all are probably familiar with the arrangement where the town would fund the entire cost of the project and then seek... of the project and then seek reimbursement at up to 80% following the closeout of the project. And then lastly, a cross-jurisdictional corridor plan. It could be a corridor study. And the process, again, would be to identify the need, to apply for the planning funding, again, through our Fall Discretionary Project Call that's open until the end of October. Similar situation, it's an 80-20 split. Again, here is our contact information. And lastly, feel free to engage with us. Our Technical Coordinating Committee meetings are held the first Thursday of each month. Todd Hunsinger is your TCC rep. And then the CRTPO Policy Board, they meet the third Wednesday of each month at 6:00 PM. We have a meeting next week on the 21st. Mayor Cohen and Councilmember Alsobrooks are members of the CRTPO Board. Feel free to check out our website, CRTPO.org. And then we're also active on Facebook and X. So, with that, very happy to present to you all this evening. And I realize you have a town council meeting, but we're also happy to take any questions that you have.
Okay, any more questions? Mike?
Just a real quick comment. As you can see, we get our money's worth plus some. You saw the multimillion dollars for $18,000 or so. The other thing, I've already engaged the staff to talk about what we want to apply for this year in funding. I've had a conversation with Bob Cook, who is there, I don't know exactly what Bob's title is, but he's pretty important, I gather. And we've talked about looking at some sidewalks and things like that. So, at your September meeting, we're going to have a list of projects we would like to submit, and we would like to get your consent at that point for us to move forward with it.
Mr. Anberger, you got any questions?
I had a couple of questions, but they got answered throughout the presentation. I appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
You did a great job. And as usual, y'all are very professional. And you're very good at what you do, and we appreciate you. And we appreciate all you've done for Indian Trail over the years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming. Okay. Let's get the 6:30 PM regular meeting started for Tuesday, August 13th, before I'll get up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Y'all remain standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. Do we have both hits after six before the September meeting or not? When is the September meeting? Does anybody know? What date it is? Okay, so just one. Just on upcoming events, on August 15th, which is this Thursday, we've got Hits After Six. And if you've never been to Hits After Six, you're missing something, man. We have a good time out there. It's bands and food and volleyball and tennis and football going on out there all at one time, and it's a great time for everybody. And I encourage you to be there, 6:00 on Thursday. We have another one, but we do have another council meeting before then, Hits After Six at September the 12th. So, look forward, and everybody come out and give it a try. With that being said, agenda additions and deletions, can, do I have any? If I don't, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I would make a motion. Yeah, that's what I was going to, yeah, I was going to make a motion to delete Item 4B and Item 7M from the agenda.
Okay, well, let's back up then. Let's do, say that again.
Delete Item 4B and then Item 7M from the agenda.
Okay, well, let's redo that then. Okay, now, can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
All right, motion to approve the amended agenda.
Oh, in favor? Unanimous. Very good. That brings us to presentations. New businesses, Sherman Williams, Tony Martin. Is Tony here?
Troy.
Troy, I'm sorry. Troy Martin, come on up. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Troy Martin. I am the store manager with Sherman Williams for our brand-new location located here in Indian Trail in the Sun Valley area. Our address is 2914 Wesley Chapel Stouts Road. We officially opened our doors on June 28th. And this past Saturday, we had our retail grand opening, which was extremely successful. It exceeded all of my expectations and then some. And so, we're so thankful to be here in your community and hope to serve all of your paint needs better than any other paint company has in this area. So, we're here to serve you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, man, it's good to have you. And you've been open for how long now?
For about six weeks.
About six weeks. That's great. And I understand you're going to be kind of close to the road out there.
We are, yes.
They're going to build a roundabout there near you, aren't they?
That's what I understand, yeah.
All right, well, then you can maybe just hand it off as people go by. You can call orders as they go through the roundabout.
That'd be great.
Well, we're glad you're here, and we have something here for you.
All right.
So, thank you for coming. That was one of the quicker ones we've ever had, Adam. But we appreciate you. That's a beautiful store, by the way.
Yes, it is. Very good job. Think Tom and his team will do this, put that together.
Come on, good job.
All right, that brings us to our Finance Quarterly Update with Mr. Wannawitz.
Good evening. Jim Wannawitz, the Finance Director. Tonight, I'm going to take you through, it's good to be before you. Tonight, I'm going to take you through the fourth quarter results. It was a solid quarter, and I'm happy to report it was a solid year for us. Since June 30th, 2024 was the end of our year. So, the first slide, thank you, Bobby. The first slide is our revenues. I'm going to take you through a couple of them, I may. The first one is our ad valorem taxes. We budgeted 96%. And I was informed that we collected 99.87%. So, that creates quite a surplus. And I want to give out two thank yous. First, our tax collector is here, Alicia Massey. She and her team do a great job. And then the second, I want to thank the people of Indian Trail, because you pay your taxes. So, thank you, appreciate that. I mean, I came from New York, it wasn't that way. So, thank you. The next one I want you to look at is the Parks and Rec. It's about the fourth one down. Hayden is always coming up with creative ideas, and you can see he's about $150,000 over budget. He's always got something going on. Ms. Brandy, planning, again, 238% of budget. She always brings it in. I don't think that sewer issue affects her one way or the other. She always has her revenue number. So, thank you to them, it's a good team. Investment earnings are very strong. It's something Mike looks at very closely, makes sure we have our idle funds being invested in the most beneficial way. A few more things coming in. The ABC Board has a fourth quarter to come in, that'll hit budget. And the video programming and the utility franchise tax, the fourth quarter comes in in September. So, I'm able to project about a $2.4 million surplus in revenues. Next slide, please, Bobby. Are there any questions on that? Would you back up, Bobby, one more time? Any questions on revenues? We do a good job with revenues in the town. Next slide is our appropriations. Mike, Alicia, Gee, our senior accountant and I, we meet every quarter with the departments to make sure there are no surprises, to make sure everybody stays within budget. And those meetings are very beneficial. We talk about a little bit of everything, staffing, morale. And people are very transparent, and I think you had a green bike. We have pretty positive. And as you can see, everyone is pretty much on budget. We stay on top of this all year long. If somebody has a problem, right away, we want to talk about it. Let's see, let's go through a couple. So, you see the sheriff's right in the middle of the page, $4.2 million. We paid that in July last year, paid the whole thing. They were happy to get that. Engineering's an interesting one. Now, we paid, there's a million dollars in there for the Old Monroe Road. That was our third installment out of five. So, we've now paid $3 million. The $5 million relationship, another million is in process. Public Works, very busy operation. In the middle of the year, January 1st, we added the ROW crew, the mowing crew. That's been very successful. I know you've seen the redness of that. Contingency, $250,000. I brought that with me from New York. That's something we put in the budget. We didn't have to use it, it's for an emergency. If we ever have to use it, we'd have to come before you and move it to the applicable category. And again, we budgeted this year $250,000. Now, the bottom there, these are outside of operations. We purchased land in July for $2 million. And we also designated, this is our third installment to the Public Works Facility. So, right now, Adam has about $4.7 million in the bank. We have another $2 million scheduled after the audit, which should be completed around September 30th. They're in here right now, auditing. Any questions on the appropriations? Next slide, Bobby, please. So, this is the last one I'll take you through. So, basically, a nickel of 18 and 1/2 cents goes directly into our Debt Service Capital Reserve Fund. The first thing I do is pay our debt. Our debt this year was $1,916,000. That's both principal and interest. We have five outstanding issues. Mike has always asked me, when do we get one fall off? 2028, about $4 million falls off a year, $400,000 in principal falls off each year. So, the first thing I do is pay our debt, and then you see that $1 million is available, and that is strictly used for capital projects. And we have quite an aggressive CIP program going on. Our engineer, Todd, is always very happy to get that number. And as you can see, we exceeded our expectation there by about 7%. And so, again, a solid year, solid quarter. The audit is going on right now, and it's been a good year for me. So, any questions? I know we have a long agenda tonight, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. And thank you for your hard work and everything you do. And Jim just had a birthday. When was it?
Monday, yeah.
When was it? Monday, Monday, yesterday, yesterday. So, I'm happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. All right, that brings us to public comments. Thank you for your interest in communicating with the Town of Indian Trail Board. Comments will be recorded and can be heard on the Internet. Please note the following rules when addressing the Indian Trail Council. Each speaker has three minutes to speak to council. Please elect one speaker for groups whenever possible regarding the same message. Comments should be directed to all council members and not to specific individuals. Speakers are to remain respectful with reasonable standards of civility. Comments will only be allowed by individuals attending the meeting in person. Written comments are not read. Any grievances regarding staff should be communicated to the town manager and not aired in this forum. Meeting facilitator may discontinue and/or disallow the speaker to continue if rules are violated. All documents provided will become town property and will be available to the public. Meetings are recorded and broadcast on the Internet along with citizens' comments. One last thing, and I know we have a full house tonight. I will ask you to hold applause, cheers. You may have people with different opinions in here. So, this, I'm going to go ahead and give you your warning now. If you cheer, applaud, clap, it's a quick way to leave. And I'm telling you, so you won't do it, so you can stay and do what you want to do. So, anyway, with that being said, our first speaker tonight is Tammy Godfrey. Tammy, come on up. It's Godfrey. What did I say, Tammy? Did I say Tammy Godfrey?
Godfrey.
Okay.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I really don't speak a lot, but I have a heavy heart. We had, I represent Car Collection, Inc., that's on the corner of 74 and Hayes Road. I've been at this dealership for the last eight years, and it brings me to tears to announce, and a lot of you already know, that we had our first fatality in that intersection last week. As a result of that, the individual who passed away, his brother came today with much appreciation and thanks for what we did. We didn't do a whole lot. Emily, she works with me at Car Collection. Mike's the owner. Typically, when there's an accident there in that intersection, we are the first ones to respond. And when I mean we're the first ones to respond, when we hear that bang in that intersection, we go running because we've had children as young as four years old. Now, we've had our fatality of one who is 20 years old. I'm asking you, as council, I've contacted the North Carolina Department of Transportation. I will not stop at this point. This has been eight years' worth of accidents in this intersection. I ask you to work with me, push on the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and help me see that this intersection is closed. I've done research. I do know that a proposed plan has been put together for the year of 2028, but we can't wait that long. I wish I could share video with you just of me leaving the office this afternoon where Hayes Road is just a two-lane cut-through from the factories from Airport Road. It has become a two-lane with the intersection. People, two cars pulling out into the intersection, two cars, one attempting to go into the intersection, one attempting to turn right. My heart is all over this. Whatever we can do to see this intersection closed, I'm asking for your help. It should not be that we had to have a fatality in that intersection for somebody to stand up. And I believe that there should be more people to speak out instead of just standing back and not saying anything. I think that makes such a difference. So, me as an individual, just who goes to work every day, I take that path. My children were coming down the opposite side of the highway when this happened. It could have been my children that were involved in this accident. Not only this fatality, but I was a prior victim further down 74 into Monroe of the same type of accident. It took a fatality to get that intersection closed. So, please help.
Thank you, Tammy. I believe it's, is it Michelle Ball or Melissa? Michelle.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here to tell you what I personally experienced last year at the Pride Festival in Monroe and what you can expect with the Pride Festival being here at the tax-funded public Chestnut Square Park and the Teen Pride Event at the Indian Trail Town Hall, right here, all with children present. Drag queens were dressed very provocatively, some with just fishnet dresses on with very little underneath. Adults and children were tucking money, much like what you would see in adult entertainment where children are restricted. The music was loaded with extreme profanity and very graphic lyrics. Much of the time, the performers were walking around flipping people off. There were people escorting the drag queens, admitting that they were perverts. Most of the people participating in the event had on shirts with profanities. There was a bondage and submission tent, do you hear me, with children present. There were also tents recruiting abortion escorts for Charlotte while they were chanting, chanting very loudly, "Fund abortions, not cops." Men dressed as women were in the women's restroom with women and children present. children present. When my friend asked one of the drag queens why they needed an audience with children, he stated, "Honey, they pay more." The Teen Pride Event held here in this building last year required that the teens' IDs be submitted ahead of time. No one should have this private information of minors. They were also very secretive and would not let any of us adults in or even close to the building. I spoke to the mayor and city manager last year about the teen event going on here. My understanding is that you were flooded with calls. You seemed generally concerned at the time, but now you also have the Pride Festival in your community. I understand that they went through the proper channels to get the park in the town hall, but at the very least, these things should be for 18 and up. It does not make someone homophobic to want to protect children. When North Carolina is ninth in the country for child trafficking, and Charlotte, 20 minutes from here, is the hub for it, don't you think we need to have some common sense here? I'm not saying that Union County Pride is responsible for this, but at the Pride March in New York, we all heard during the drag march them chanting, "We're here, we're queer, we're coming for your children." Why do we not believe what they're saying right to us? The lines between adult and children have been blurred like never before. The Bible says it would be better than a millstone would be hung about your neck than to hurt one of these little ones. And right now, I'm sorry, but you're complicit. It caused, it's caused a lot of heat and tension in Monroe, and I suggest you clean up your city before it's too late. This is not how you want to leave your legacy. Edmund Burke said, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing."
Michelle.
I wondered if you might allow me, someone's willing to dedicate their time, if I could tell you some legal matters that is-
Michelle, you have three minutes.
Okay.
With everybody.
That's fine.
But thank you for coming up.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam Pennell.
First off, I'd like to thank the body for allowing me to come and speak my grievance. It's not with you guys. I have a situation where I have next-door neighbors that are thieves, criminals, dope sellers, and this has been going on for 20 years. We moved out here in the year of 2020, 2020, and we, 2004. And when we came out here, there was no Austin Village, there wasn't any lights at Pleasant Plains, Chestnut. Four months later, my next-door neighbors broke into my shop and stole $5,000 worth of tools. I was supposed to get $500 restitution. I got $5. They have thrown golf balls and trash into my yard, and that's a mower hazard. They have young children. I don't. I've seen them smoking marijuana in their driveway. Always a vehicle with the window out, and there are currently five to seven vehicles in the yard. Three are not running. Currently, there's a white Mustang that just last week had the rear window knocked out, so it's still there, and a van windshield the week before. And then there's a Mercedes there that now has the window knocked out. So in the past, they pulled down the door to my Leonard Building. Why? The sheriff told me, "Don't make them mad," and I'm supposed to live next door to this with no help. Earlier this year, Mr. Hatley, the guy that lives there, came over and told me that Sheriff Craig had knocked down my mailbox and told me he would handle the cost of it. I fixed it, charged him $50. I'm a handyman. The next day, there was a screw in my tire. It cost me $150. Mr. Hatley was looking at me across from his deck, just smiling. You know, wasn't me. And I asked him, "What is wrong with you people?" I said, "Do you, what do you call a screw in the sidewall on my tire?" He said, "Just bad luck." Now, bad luck is moving into a family full of cockroaches. Approximately a year ago, they built a non-code addition to a shed out in their backyard. On June 6th of this year, it burnt down and has yet to be cleaned up. I was going to show you pictures, but I don't think we have the time. I looked into the rubble and saw a tub that I had stored behind my building in the fire, what was left of the fire now. There's other things that he stole from me. He stole the game camera I was recording him on, you know, and it was burned up in the fire. Stole a wheelbarrow. There's other things that I probably haven't noticed because I don't go and take stock every day around my property. The building had a garden hose for water and electricity run to it. Neither one code. Mr. Rodney Cobb has done his best to help me. He has parameters he has to work within. They have told Mr. Cobb that they are filing an insurance claim, making money off what they stole from me. That's when I hit the fan, you know. Lately, I have noticed my vehicles being damaged from falling tree trunks. I know better. The limbs are not as big unless you swing them at my car. The cost to repair my hood is $1,100. There is a two, there is two very young children by Amanda Craig there at the dwelling. I have seen them standing on top of the junk cars, and it could easily fall. Children are innocent, and I have notified DSS. There isn't often a good bit of nighttime traffic, and the Sheriff's Department is well aware of this. You probably know the names without me having to go into it. My wife is scared to stay at home. She shouldn't have to be scared to stay at home.
Sam, you have three minutes. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Would you like us to take those notes and send it?
You betcha. I printed a couple extra copies. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Sam.
I never got finished, but he's got the rest of it.
Ronnie, is it Bowles?
Bowers.
Bowers.
I want to say, first of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I stand before you as the executive pastor at First Baptist Church in Indian Trail, and I come on behalf of our staff and our church family. And I want to say to you, in 25 years of ministry, the church has been called on for everything. Helped the single mom getting ready for school. Violence erupts at a school. There's a loss of a child or a beloved teacher. The church is the first to be called in. But one of the funniest things is, is when we begin to express why we do what we do, we are, people begin to look at us and just say, "These are bigoted people. These are people that really are hateful and hypocritical." And when we begin to stand for what we believe, we're called old-fashioned or narrow-minded, and especially when it becomes issues where we begin to speak against the grain of a culture that is going way, way away from guarding our children and protecting them. We are extremely concerned with the festival that is coming up, the Pride Festival. We are discouraged that our town would allow it to happen, first of all. But the second thing, which we find even more discouraging and troubling, is the fact that we are allowing children to be groomed in those particular events. We realize that many of you that stand in front of, that I stand in front of today are believers, and we're asking you not to celebrate, not to separate your faith and your leadership, because what we really believe is only a true belief when we stand in our convictions. People like us voted for people like you, and we expect and hope that you will vote in ways that will protect our children and our community. So we're asking for a couple things, just real, simply, and clearly. First, reconsider the event completely, but at least consider looking at this event and guarding our children and making it an adult-only event. All it takes is a few clicks on your computer at home to see what these things stand for. I spent about two hours the last three days looking at those events, and they are troubling. They're not funny. They're not cute. They're disrespectful, and more importantly, they're dangerous to the next generation. So we're asking specifically for you to do one of those two things. We're asking you to lead with courage and conviction when we know the culture is totally different. But we're asking you to stand for what you say you believe and lead with great courage and great conviction. So we're asking you to just stop and think. We appreciate your willingness to even allow us to speak tonight, but we're asking you to do more than listen. We're asking you to change your decision. We understand the permitting. We understand diversity, but there's a point in time where you have to guard your community from things that are unrighteous and go against God's Word. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Kevin Presley?
Thank you, Mayor Cole and Council, and I really appreciate you letting me speak tonight. I'm usually sitting on that side, not this side, and have been for 26 years. I was adding it up. I mean, my goodness, that's been a long time. And I have seen tremendous amount of change over those 26 years, things that are easy to deal with and things that are not so easy to deal with. And unfortunately, this is one of the situations, as you've done heard by the previous speakers, that I am strongly asking for your help on this. I've always prided myself to talk to people that brag on my neighbor town of Indian Trail. Y'all have done such a wonderful job. Ball fields everywhere, parks, things that a little town like Hemi Bridge can't do. But we can enjoy you guys. And my grandkids play ball over here, and then, you know, we go to the restaurants over here, you know, even though we own one, you know. So, but we still try to, try to work in Indian Trail and put back, so we do enjoy the facilities. But I'm just asking you a question. Why? Why does this have to go here like this? I mean, you've seen everything that's going on down, you know, our neighbor in Monroe that went down there. Why do we have to allow this to happen here in our, in our door? You know, and I know you've got a tough decision, me sitting on that side of it, and things that are decisions that has to be made. You know, we have, we have governing laws that guide us that we have to do, and then we have rules and regulations that, that we as a governing body put on top of those, those rules that are laid forth by the federal and the state. And, and so, I know it's a tough decision you have to make, but we have to be fair to everybody. I understand that. And that comes with some of the tough decisions that goes against our beliefs, you know, but we as elected officials, we have to make those tough decisions. And, you know, I, I just want to, just want to reiterate that the, in these, in this particular festival that's happening and everything else that may come after that, I just want to remind you that, that oath that we all took says that we'll uphold the Constitution and the laws of North Carolina. Every one of you's taken it. I've taken it. You know, probably, you know, 16 times, well, not that much, 10 times probably. And so, in that, it also, and I want to remind you, I'm sure you've probably seen this, but in Article 26 of Chapter 14, it lays out, and I'd be glad, more than happy to give you this thing, it lays out the offenses against public morality and decency. And just to read a couple, I won't have time to read it all, but it involves, it involves materials that is against the law to, for program materials not suitable for young children, minors who may be in the meeting place, such as alcohol, tobacco, illicit drugs, nudity, sexualized conduct, attire, or profanity. It also says, talks about direct and obscene play, dance, other performances participates directly in that portion where it makes it obscene. It talks about in this, and you can read all this, but it talks about the, the meaning of what we just heard about. And I didn't go to the one in Monroe about all the leather and all the things that's happened. It's for display. It talks about, none of these materials shall be designed for, directed to such children, and talking about minors under the age of 18. So my question is, why? And you have a chance to, to stop this, and you have a chance just to follow the law, for, for, just for the protection of our children. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kevin. Andy Olson.
How we doing, everybody? I'm Andy Olson. I live in the Chrismark Development. I'm sure the mayor knows about the problems we have there with our parking. It turns out our streets are only 14 feet wide, and we can no longer park on the streets. So we worked with the mayor and the police that we were allowed to park on the row, which means we could straddle the grass with one tire on the street, one tire on the sidewalk. That way, the buses, the, the people can come by. Well, it turns out, we recently had an HOA change, and they, just recently, as of a month ago, without anybody knowing, they made it no longer allowed to park on the row. So they basically said, "You need to park on the street. We can't park on the street. We'll get ticketed by sheriff." So their other answer is, park in your garage. I have a van that's 12 feet tall. You'll see it when you leave here. It's a big four-wheel-drive van. It's not getting in the garage. So I'm wondering where, where the rules are to where, does the HOA have authority to tell me where I can park on city property? We may, we, we actually found out from the mayor and Todd Huntsinger. I've been working with him directly for the past month on my own little issue for the concrete I did pour in my row. He's been working with me great on that. HOA's fighting hard on it. I've been, and I've been fighting for almost a year. I have close to $1,000 worth of fines for my HOA because of it, and I'm still fighting. I think I have some friends here that may speak as well, that I need to run for HOA because we have people there that are afraid now. And if we can get this parking thing figured out, I think it would relax everybody's nerves. I could see maybe the HOA being upset about the grass. I totally understand that. That's a visual thing. We're going to try to make it, or maybe you could help us with, can we park in the row and not damage the grass? That's what we would like, because they made it, you can't park on the row at all. And there are some developments in our area, areas where you can't, that's not possible to park in the street. And everybody that's currently on our HOA board lives in the new enclave section where they have 30-foot streets, and they're on, on almost an acre of property and have three-car garages and 40-foot driveways. When I moved in, I had a duly truck. Mine almost went into the street. It blocks the sidewalk. But now I have smaller cars. And I know the mayor worked well with us, and Carney was there, and Todd Huntsing was there, and he said, "Well, yes, if you can afford it, the best option would be to pave." Well, I know some people that are on assisted living can't afford to pave. Can we just make it to where, or get with you to where, yes, we can park on the city property, which is the row? What authority does my HOA have to tell me where I can park on city property? I totally understand that maybe we're damaging the grass. I understand that. But we've been doing this so long now, most of the people that had problems with their grass can take care of it now. They move their cars. They, they'll park onto someone else's row that they don't need it to save the grass. So I would like to maybe make a meeting with you guys. I'll try to set that up, and maybe we can get this resolved, because I have HOA members that are afraid of our HOA board now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sonia Thomas.
Hi, I'm a lifelong resident of Indian Trail. My name's Sonia Thomas. First of all, I want to thank all of you for your service to this town. What you do is incredibly important, and your service to this town and your attention to the concerns of the community are appreciated. Indian Trail's been a wonderful place to live and raise a family all my life. I am, however, concerned with some recent developments in Indian Trail. We've been discovered by Union County Pride. This group has held events in Union County for the past couple of years in Monroe, but now they've decided to move their festival here. My concern is that these, there are not any policies in place to protect children from viewing these very vile and sexually inappropriate events. It is obvious from seeing the events they have planned and from what they've done before that the group has a disturbing goal of reaching out to children and youth. Young people are easy to recruit, and this group wants to recruit. Sexual entertainment is not for children. There's a longstanding establishment just up 74, and we would be appalled to think that minors were allowed to go in there. And it should be just as disturbing to us to imagine them going to a drag show or an event hosted by drag performers. The group's sponsoring these events, Union County Pride, Timeout Youth, Charlotte Gamers, P Flag, they have an agenda to reach our young people, and we need to take a stand. You were elected to protect the citizens of Indian Trail, and those who are minors are citizens. What policies do you have in place to prevent the sexual exploitation of our young people by these groups? It's unfair to families who've put their trust in your leadership to not have protections in place. Some children end up at drag events because their parents knowingly expose them to lewd behavior. Others are just victims of parents who don't realize the agenda. But some may be taken to events, to events by an older sibling, an aunt or an uncle, or a neighbor, or a friend who offers free babysitting services. Middle or high schoolers may be invited to a friend's house and driven to the event by their friend's parents. The child's parents may never even know what they've been exposed to. It could be your teen, or your child, or your grandchild, that someone sneaks off to one of these events. Even our movie theater has age restrictions based on content. Don't you think that a sexualized event like drag should have appropriate restrictions in place? You're in a difficult, difficult position, a difficult position. This is a defining moment for you in Indian Trail Town Council. This should be the issue that keeps you up at night. Will this town continue to be a safe place for children and families? Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. John Early?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to yield my time back to Michelle Ball.
Yeah, you're, that's, I don't think you can do that by the rules. Can you do that by the rules? No?
Not according to the town rules.
I'm sorry. You want to come up and speak?
Good evening. How y'all doing today? Studies have found that LGBTQ youth attempt suicide three times more frequently than heterosexual youth. A Canadian study estimated that the risk of suicide among LGBTQ youth is 14 times higher than that of heterosexual youth. Among youth who have attempted suicide, almost twice as many LGBTQ youth said they really hoped to die. Of transgender people, between 30 and 45% report having attempted suicide. GBT men have a higher risk of suicide than women, although women attempt suicide more frequently. With this knowledge, why would you allow an organization such as Union County Pride to have a fest- to have a festival in our public parks at taxpayer cost? They are not paying for this, they're getting it for free. I am paying for it, I pay taxes, they're using my money to fund something that I am totally against, and I resent that very much. And I know a lot of people in this county, in this city feel the same way as I do. They have already stated they're coming after our children, as you heard. And you are elected by us, the people of Indian Trail, and charged to protect us, as much as in your power to do so. I pray to God that you have rules in place to protect our children and grandchildren from the introduction and sexualization of this group and their plans. And, uh, I know you're, the protective speech and all that, but when one of these kids goes up and puts a gun in their mouth and blows their brains out, go tell their parents or their grandparents that you stood for free speech. Thank you.
Mark King.
Hi, I'm Mark King, and I live in the Chris Mark subdivision. I came to talk about parking, and he's already talked about that, I'll get there, but before I do that, I just wanted to mention that I echo and all of the concerns about the Pride event here. Uh, we moved here from Chicago, and we were able to observe Pride events there, and I noticed something very interesting. Went to a Pride parade and observed, and then watched it on the news. It was a very sanitized version on the news of what they covered. So, uh, there is a petition being circulated now by the concerned citizens of Indian Trail regarding developing a policy to make sure that all, uh, events and public, uh, facilities are used in a way that is non-sexual and age-appropriate. So I just want to, uh, to, uh, second, second the motion there that you take a look at that and reconsider. What I came to talk about is, we live in, uh, Chris Mark, we bought in July of 2009, we live in the older section, which is the only section at that time. Uh, our area is characterized by narrow streets, short driveways, and, uh, houses without much storage. So as a result, our garages are usually full of things, like we have right now, I think six bicycles, a recycling bin, a power washer, fertilizer spreader, a lawn mower, a tool chest, fishing gear, and Christmas decorations and all that other stuff, all right? And we can fit two vehicles in our driveway, one, a minivan, just barely fits, and there's a lot of, uh, vehicles that won't fit in the garages or the driveways where our, if I had a large pickup, it wouldn't fit. I saw a guy had parked his pickup, and he put a traffic cone out in front of his pickup because it was partially in front of, uh, including the sidewalk. Anyway, uh, now we've got three teenagers and, uh, more cars, and, uh, we have to park on the, uh, street or on the row. Uh, we can't park on the street because it's not wide enough, we can't park in the row now that the HOA has changed the rules without warning, and as far as I can tell, over the objections of anybody that has expressed an opinion on it, um, they tell us to pave the row in front of our house and park there, and my understanding is, we don't own that, so if we, even if we pave it, somebody else could still park there. Uh, so, uh, it's a catch-22. If we, we get a fine from the city, or the, from the sheriff's office possibly, or we get a fine from the HOA, um, the board member who was pushing this issue just basically says, let them eat cake, or really says, just park in your garage, can't do that. So we're asking, uh, that, again, this be clarified somehow. Uh, Officer Canary has expressed a willingness to attend the HOA meeting to kind of help sort out some of the safety and legal and code issues, and said he just needs to get approval, uh, from whoever needs to approve that, to attend the meeting, and so I'm here asking that that would, uh, that that could be approved, um, whoever needs to do that. And, uh, and we're just trying to look for some clarification on those issues there. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Falconberry.
First want to address item number 11A. While we're discussing the complete street once again, eliminating underground utilities, we just want to address June 25th council meeting. On the record, Mr. Barber himself asked the question, Todd Huntsinger answered the question, and here we are again, wasting taxpayer money. We're gonna delay it again for a purpose. Doesn't make any sense. Also with this Gay Pride event, I was the one who confronted those who held the event here last year, nobody else did. Lies were told, it was not open and transparent, I was informed I couldn't see who attended the meeting because of privacy issues, et cetera, et cetera. But the thing I don't understand is, the event hasn't yet to happen. We don't know what's gonna happen. If something illegal does take place, we have deputies on the scene. Shut it down. As Christians, we're talking about Christianity, I remember back in the 60s, when you had, in the public, water fountains labeled white and colored. Restrooms, white. The restrooms for the African-Americans were outhouses behind the, the facilities. So to preach about God, and with the track record this country's had over the years, believe it or not, the constitution is for everyone, we the people. Regardless of what you personally believe, you represent everyone, regardless of what faults they may have. Are we all perfect? No, we're not. My wife reminds me every day I'm not perfect. But on that, this event has yet to happen. Allow it to happen. If something does by chance go wrong, illegal activities, shut it down. That's the grounds to get rid of it. Until then, you represent everyone, and remind you of that, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Let me just, Joey Weaver, Mike Ischett Schmidt here, um, and Matthew Good, and Larry Good. You've all got down here cigar shop. Is, can I, will you raise your hand?
Joey Weaver.
Joey Weaver.
At this point, I should have put my glasses on.
You want it, you don't want it on this, you want it on the...
Well, I was just gonna clear up any misconceptions. At this point, my comments would lack context and be premature. I apologize to the body for not putting on my reading glasses so I could see where the agenda fell.
All I'm, all I want to know is, do you want me to put you on, on the, uh, public comments for the cigar shop? Because it is separate...
Once again, I must apologize.
Oh, that's fine. You're, you're, it happens all the time, and, and everybody down here that says cigar shop, do you wanna, you wanna do it on the cigar shop? So I'm not gonna call anybody that's got cigar shop down here. Okay, very good. All right. Just remind me when it comes around to that time that, that I don't forget to do that. I think, let me make sure. Okay, Troy. Troy, are, no?
No, I've, I've already done my...
Okay, you signed up for, you signed up for it, though, that's okay. Just want to make sure. Judy Silverquit.
I would rather confront a gang of rabbit raccoons than talk in front of people, so take pity on me, please. I'm here in support of having the event. I don't have a dog in this fight. But here's the thing, for whatever reason, I have been loved unconditionally, much more than I ever deserved. And there's a lot of lack of hope, like I've heard tonight in this world, and a lack of love. And the way I see it, the only way to cure that is to love unconditionally. And when that park was built, I felt blessed, and I thank God for that park, that he would build a park that I was fortunate enough to go to. And the way I see it, is that if God built that park for me, he built it for everybody. And I for one have enough to answer to God for, that I don't want to worry about what somebody else is doing. And I know there are extremes in every group, and I appreciate that. There are extremes in Christian groups, as we all know, I sit in a pew every Sunday. And there are extremes in every segment of society. But when we other people, when we say, all of you are trying to get our children, all of you are pedophiles and perverts, and all of you have ill intentions, it's such a, such a dangerous precedent, precedence. You know, if you don't learn from history, you're gonna repeat it, and it may seem impossible that something like the Holocaust, or what happened back during Jim Crow time, could ever happen again in this world. But it's that kind of thinking that allows it to be. And I'm not here speaking for anybody but myself, I don't represent anybody clearly, and I don't mean to upset anybody, and you got a right to your beliefs, believe me, and I respect those. But all I'm saying is that if God can love me, then I can love other people, and I can understand that I don't want to add to what is already a painful existence. And as for talks about suicide among youth, a lot of that comes because they feel like they got no outlet. They're different, they're unloved, they're not gonna be accepted. And however you feel about what's gonna happen, there is no child, whoever they are, whatever they feel, that should ever feel othered. We as a people have an opportunity to say, you know what, I may not agree with you, this may even scare me, but welcome, because God has welcomed me, and this town has given me a life that I don't deserve. You come on. You come on. Because if I deserve to live in a wonderful place like this, among wonderful people, like all of you are, then I figure everybody's got a right to. And let them use the park, I'll pay my taxes for it. I may not like all of it, but I love the people that are there, every single last one of them, and I will support their right to be in that park, because it costs me nothing. It costs me nothing. I answer to God for myself. Only thing God told me to do is love everybody, and that's what I'm gonna do.
Thank you, Judy. Okay. That wraps up that portion of the, uh, public comments, which brings us now to, um, brings us to the council comments. Is anybody would like to make a comment? Mr. Gay?
I had talked with, um, Captain James, our captain, going back a couple of years ago, and I'd also talked to, um, Mr. Canipe at DOT about that intersection at Hayes Road. Didn't used to be that busy. Uh, one of the factors, of course, is growth in the area, but also, the other issue is that people go there, and they also, also skip the other Indian Trail, uh, the Indian Trail roads other than that one, because they want to avoid the Michigan turn lanes. And, um, and one thing, at the point Captain James and I both agreed that, uh, they needed to do something about that intersection. And what happens is, people, uh, they wait, they wait, they wait, and they want to go straight across, whereas all they have to do, if we can somehow work this out with DOT, is make that a right turn only, because you go right up the street just, you know, uh, a few feet, and you can make a U-turn at, at light over where, um, the old Wilco is, which I guess is pilot now, and make their left and come back around. But it's extremely dangerous, and, um, I'm guilty of going over there and using it because I can't stand these Michigan turn lanes, and, um, I think that it would, it, it's a rat race right there, and I think that if we could just get a right turn only, uh, coming out of that road, it would help immensely.
He may, uh...
Yeah, I concur, um, at least no left turn there, you know, and you'd have to go right, of course, but, um, that's the simple fix. You know, I don't think it warrants the light, they would have put one there already, because it's gonna be so close to the next one, would it not? Captain?
I think there are some DOT regulations that you can't have them that close.
Mm-hmm.
There's no light there.
So we need to push DOT to right line, right turn only, yeah, I agree.
Mr. Officer Brooks.
So, um, please forgive me, I have a very sore throat, but, um, Councilman Gay did mention Hayes Road, um, some time back, and how dangerous the intersection was. And, uh, since the fatality, the mayor and I have spoken, and, um, as a CRTPO rep, um, I'll make it my mission, um, we have a meeting Wednesday to address this intersection, and, you know, I, I've said this before, and I know it's not what people like to hear, but, um, those U-turns, they call them Michigan U-turns, it's not the term, the, the, the purpose of those is so that you can see, um, and I know we all hate them, but you can see oncoming traffic, so it, it helps you make a better judgment, instead of trying to cross a four-lane road. But I will take it upon myself, um, to, uh, speak with NC DOT and everyone at CRTPO. Also, um, just for any other comments were made, I, I thank everyone for coming out, and I know it took a lot of, um, guts and, and things of that nature to speak, so I appreciate you, uh, letting us know how you feel.
Matty Els? Mr. Barber?
I was gonna thank that lady for, uh, appreciate her bringing up Hayes Road, uh, but she left. So, the, uh, as far as Chris Mark people suggest you talk to the town manager, I think it's a good question is, you know, can you park on a town road or not? You know, I don't know, I, I live on a state road, and so, the, uh, but, as far as the other elephant in the room, it's one of those days where you decided to run again, and you go, what was I thinking? Um, the, but I'll address it, is, when you open facilities to the public, you can see what door you open. I mean, there are just potential discrimination issues, things like that, but when it comes to children, we are protective of children. You go to the movie theater, R-rating, you can't take someone else's kid in there. You know, you go to school, my kids, if they wanted to teach them sex education, I had to sign off on it as a parent. So I think there's legitimate concerns when you start talking about children. I had a pastor email me today, and he addressed the issue, and he said, well, can't we have an age requirement? And so I sent an email to the town manager today, and I said, people are citing Article 26 of Chapter 14 of, of North Carolina general statutes, and I think that's the one you mentioned, which addresses obscene content, display, expedition, presentations, plus materials not suitable for young children and minors. I'm asking what assurances do we have that groups reading facilities will be in compliance with these state statutes? Is it, or if they're still relevant? I wonder if there's been a court case that may have deemed them real relevant, I have no idea. Uh, I'm also asking, has the town incorporated any type of safety issues into our policies and rules about children being dropped off or being unintended at events when people rent facilities? So I'm asking for these. The issue you bring up is, is age requirement on certain types of event may be a relevant thing that we need to really look at. So I'm asking, I've asked the town manager to look into it. It may be something we can't do, it may be something that legally we can't do, but I think, I appreciate y'all's concern, because I think it's a legitimate concern. And I think it, uh, needs to be looked into, but this is not a town event, and it's, you know, people have rights, First Amendment's a strong thing, but the protection of children is also a valid issue. So that's where I'm at. It's not an agenda item today, but we'll see if it's worthy of an agenda item at the next meeting, is where I'm at. But I appreciate y'all's concern, and your, your spoke, and everything. God bless you.
Mr. Gay?
Yeah, one thing I think we need to look at, I mean, uh, the movies have a, uh, rating, and I think, and I guess this is a question we could ask the attorney, and she may have to look this up, but does R-rated, doesn't that require that an adult be with a, uh, somebody who's below the, the legal age to go into that movie?
Seventeen.
So, below 17, can, uh, can they go in there with a parent, with a guardian? How does the, are the rating work?
I was just using it as an example, that people are concerned about what children are looking at, I wasn't trying to push a legal issue, one of those, I don't want to...
We get letters that we want to have, uh, adults with them or whatever, and that's what I'm getting at, uh, but, uh, so we have the legal issue, that's the problem, and a lawsuit, as somebody comes after the, they see the, uh, the bank account of the town, and this group, I think, is, uh, highly, uh, involved with a, uh, what do you call it? Civil rights, and, uh, they may be looking for an opportunity to get into a, a big bank account and cash in. So we have to be very careful what we do. Certainly, when somebody has, uh, uh, writing and that sort of thing on their shirt, that's not proper. Uh, if they're in some sort of, uh, rules in a town, uh, I used to hear that, I mean, we've all seen the Chevy and the Ford stickers on the back of trucks where they're peeing, and, uh, and they, uh, they've been pulled over and stopped, and, and fined for that, there, there's gotta be some sort of restrictions on what these people... There's got to be some sort of restrictions on what these people can be saying out in public, and what they can be presenting on their clothing or signs. So I guess I'm looking at our attorney for some comments on it.
That's Article 26.
Right. The sheriff's office is in charge with enforcing the criminal laws, and I'm sure they will do so at that event like they do everywhere else. But the town's not involved with that.
So we do have laws for vulgar things on signs and clothing and that sort of thing in public?
There is North Carolina... There is North Carolina general statute on that. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I can quote it. I can write you a speeding ticket all day, but I'd be glad to look into it as far as from the sheriff's office legal standpoint. But as far as that event, I know that they have, they are seeking off-duty folks to work that event. So the actual, just as anybody can, anybody, and if you have an event anywhere, then you can hire off-duty deputies for security. So yes, we will have folks there, as far as sheriff's office personnel. But there again, I would have, before I misquote any general statute, I would have to do some research with our legal counsel and see, you know, just what those ramifications or extent to those laws are.
Right. I got you. Okay. If you could do that for us, and maybe the town manager or the deputy or whatever can just say that there's been complaints about where they've been, other places with vulgar things, that'd be a start to try to protect the general public and the children from that kind of exhibit in public, particularly in a public park. That would be nice.
And I would also say that it's, I'm not trying to throw anything off of anybody, because if there is a violation of North Carolina general statute, of course, yes, that's my purview. However, I'm not familiar, have not read the article that you put forth, so I would like to also read that, just because I don't know, I don't know what the town can do, so I'm not going to say that you should do anything or throw anything on somebody that I don't know what I'm talking about. But I will tell you that I'll do my research on it and give you some advice. How about that?
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Crystal, did you have anything to say?
I was just going to mention that we were requiring additional deputies to be at the event. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. We have requested that they have off-duty officers, and they have agreed to that. This is the first time we've ever done that with an event.
Can I clarify one thing there?
Yeah.
Okay, so the sheriff's office off-duty is a sign up voluntarily if you want to work it. Just because you have it out there for off-duty, because we have ran into this in other areas of the town, just because you put it out there for off-duty, does not mean that somebody's going to sign up to work it. That does not guarantee you a body.
That is correct, and there have been discussions that in the event that no deputy signs up, I think they've got some other folks lined up. Hayden will be able to speak to that. This is the first time we've requested this, because this is a highly controversial, highly volatile issue, whichever side you're on. And there are differing opinions. We are preparing a draft for Councilmember Barber that we will share with all of you. In this particular case, with this particular group, they have gone through the, you know, whether you support the lifestyle or what, I'm talking about the process, they have gone through the process to reserve a portion of the park, the quad, the volleyball, the tennis court and the field, much as if someone reserved a portion of the park for a private gathering. If Tom, Councilmember Amburgi, works for Golden Corral, and if his group reserved the quad and the tennis courts and all of that for that period of time, that is a private event, and they can determine who can come in and who cannot. One of the things we will put in the draft, and if I'm speaking out of context, Ms. Cox, please correct me, that there are trying to get some off-duty deputies, the event is still a month away. Hayden has had some discussions, and if for some reason that doesn't work out, they've got a Plan B. If there is a problem, then someone will call law enforcement, and law enforcement will respond. Is that right, Captain? If, okay, you will. In the event, that the event organizer, who's a licensed attorney, and I'm not trying to defend her or crucify her, in the event that she would allow something like that to go on, being a licensed attorney, I think she has a higher standard that she has to follow, which would subject her to investigation and perhaps discipline in her role as an attorney. Mr. Barber has asked that an item be placed on the next agenda. No?
Oh, what, which item?
Well, you, just read the draft. You asked if we could put something on there, and...
Asking that the reservation...
Okay, yes, okay.
Instead of making it just a process, make it a policy.
Okay, fair enough, because that was the question we were going to ask you in the draft. So that's about all the information we've got. I can't tell you, in the conversations I've had with Hayden, they have been very good to work with, they've been very prompt if we've asked for information. They did get that when we had a fee waiver, since the fee waiver has been canceled. They do have a reservation downstairs that they are paying for, and they have paid for already.
Question, just take this group and set it aside, just anybody in the park, we have to have some sort of rules and regulations about what they're wearing, and if it's vulgar and that sort of thing? And so do we, hopefully we'll have somebody there to monitor any group that comes in and eject them if they've, if they're breaking that rule?
You know, we have general rules, and if there's disorder, then, you know, we can order them to leave. I said a little while ago, they have made a reservation. I don't know if anybody's using the quad right now, but if the employees of Golden Corral wanted to go out there and have a gathering at the quad, and I'm just picking on you, because I know you work for Golden Corral, giving you some advertisement there, they could do that. But because they did not have a reservation, then anybody could come in the quad, and they could not get them to leave. So they could go out there right now and have whatever.
You're saying they can have whatever they want on their display?
Mr. Gay, you need to raise your hand. You got, Mr. Barber's, I have a question. Go ahead.
Do we run the security cameras when we have private events?
Well, I think there were security cameras running last year, but because that was a private event downstairs inside our building, we also had two people, two off-duty parking employees, working.
And what about the parks? I remember we approved cameras for the parks.
We do have Wi-Fi, and I'm going to ask for Bobby to talk about the Wi-Fi, or Abby or someone that can talk about that.
If you're talking about the security cameras at the parks, yes, we do have cameras that are watching the majority of the areas over at Crooked Creek, and Chestnut is mainly for the building area right now, just because we do not have the capability to get cameras further around the rest of the park.
Okay. I was just wondering what we could monitor. Thank you.
And I could add, the roadways in and out of the park will be open.
Okay, is that it? Is that all?
I thought Mr. Gay had his hand up unless he's changed mine.
But if somebody not associated with a group comes in and is wearing objectionable words or whatever, we can ask them to leave, can't we?
Yeah, I think the real question, and I'm not an attorney, is what's objectionable?
NCGS 14-190.1 talks about obscene literature and exhibitions, so it would have to fall within that definition. It's not just that it's objectionable to someone, but it would have to meet the definition of obscene as defined by the North Carolina general statute.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep. If that's it, it's, let me just say a few words, I think, as mayor. I should say a few things. First of all, I wanted to talk, not about what the elephant in the room, but the other things, and then I'll get to that. As far as parking and Chris Mark, you guys have tried, and unfortunately, much of that is an HOA, what your HOA is doing, and not so much what the town is doing. But you know what? Your residents, and I've been there many times, and you do have a, you've got a parking problem over there. And I think, you know, our planning director knows all about those problems, and I think Todd Hunzinger knows all about those problems. And I don't really know what we can do, other than the fact that I'll sit down and talk, and talk with your HOA, and try to come up with something, come up with something. We've tried in the past, and it seems like we always get a fix, but I've never heard of an HOA changing the rules in mid-term. So that really has nothing to do, the town doesn't even know what your HOA is going to do, so...
May I speak just for a minute?
Well, you're not supposed to, but go ahead, real quick.
The town has been accommodating. It's great. We're just trying to figure out...
Well, you can say that. That's always good. You can keep talking if you want to, so...
Todd Hunzinger has been to my home, and it's amazing what you guys have done to help us. I know we are fighting my HOA, but we're just trying to figure out the legalities to where the HOA has authority over where the city row you own and what they could deem is a violation.
Okay.
So you guys have been great.
Thank you, thank you, and we'll continue to drop.
I got nothing on that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would think that you would go back to your management company also. They would know all the legalities. They could help you with the legalities versus, you know, the HOA, because, you know, some wild people out there and HOAs, I know the feeling. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. And then, Teresa has left, and I'm very aware of what happened on the, our accident on 74 the other day. And I've been by there to check with her, and I've actually watched the accident on her cameras there, which is just something you don't want to do. And we need to do something very quickly. I've got in touch with Britt Knype, the head of our DOT in our area. He sent me something today with some fixes to the area, but as we all know in government, sometimes it's not quick enough. And he had some dates on there in the future that were a long ways away, and it'll help if too, if you as residents get out and let the DOT know that that is a dangerous, dangerous intersection. So with that being said, we need to get it done. We need to get it done sooner than when she said in 2028. We need to get it done within the next couple of months, month or two, and that would be, that would be lightning fast for...
I'll say something to that.
Well, you are, so go ahead, John.
I have, I work part-time, I deliver auto parts, and I go that way all the time. I agree with Councilman Gay, it needs to be a right turn only right there at Hayes Road, because cars going, time goes by, calls will be two at a time, and if you're trying to make a U-turn, you cannot see to make a U-turn. I usually, if I didn't have to come down Hayes Road to go up to Honda, I go up to the light and make my U-turn there. But that light needs to be recalibrated, so it don't take so long to change. That's all I need to say.
Okay, thank you, John. As far as the Pride event in the park, you know, last year when we had our first Pride event, it was downstairs, and let me tell you, my phone rang off the hook, and I answered every call, and I called every person back that called, because it's my job and to do it. It was something that was approved, really, ahead of time. But I felt like it was my place as mayor, and I know there were protesters out here. And I came by here that afternoon, and there were protesters, and they weren't allowing people to come in to the, including the mayor, and they wouldn't let anybody come in, because it was a, you had to be on the guest list to come. And that night, I babysitted my granddaughter in Charlotte, along with my wife, and when my granddaughter goes to bed, I leave. So, you know, that's, I love my wife, but I, my granddaughter's, I don't get to see her that often, so I know I'll get to see my wife when she gets home. I left, and I came by here, and I could, at that point, drive into the, to the facility. I drove around to the back. I could see inside. I didn't get out, and I didn't go inside, but I could see inside. And I saw what I saw. We have a lot of tables downstairs, and I saw a lot of mothers, ten or 12 mothers mainly. There was a couple of dads there, mainly mothers, and they were sitting out back on their phones, as all of us would be, that, you know, they were looking at their phones. They had a few mothers inside, and they were playing games. They were dancing. They were playing games. And it was quite, it was quite a learning experience for me to see what all I had heard and then what I, all I saw firsthand. Now, I don't proclaim to be on one side or another side, but what I'd like to say was, it gave the opportunity, and this is just my opinion, it gave the opportunity for kids who are different. And these kids were brought there by their mothers, because I saw them, and they got to share a time with kids alike. Whereas, I know John had brought up the fact of suicide and things like that, and I get it, I get it. But I think a lot of times, these kids are suicidal because they're not accepted. And again, it's not, it's not, this is just something I noticed, that they're not accepted in the real world. I'm a Christian, and I proclaim, and I'm proud, I'm a Christian. And I don't condemn nor condone what goes on. But you know, the park is free, and the park is available for everybody. You could walk over to the park today, tomorrow. They could have this event without reserving the park. They could just show up. Nobody would know. Nobody, it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a problem for anybody. They could all say, 500 people, all get together, 300, whatever, we're going to show up and go to the park. Parks are empty, parks free, you could go. So by reserving the park, what they're saying is, we're going to come to the park, and we're going to let you know we're coming to the park, and if you don't want to go to the park, don't go to the park. Don't, don't, stay away from the park. Don't go. I have no reason to go to the park. But at the same time, if it's free and anybody can go to the park when they want to go to the park, I appreciate more that they let us know that they're coming to the park than they don't. Plus, they're bringing security, which not everybody does that either. So again, to protect the rights of a minority, you're also protecting the rights of a Christian. And what I mean by that is, if we don't protect the rights of minorities, then how do we protect our own selves, or for our own good being? How do we do that? And if this town would like for me to, I would be more than happy to go to the event, and I'd see it, and I'd stop. I would personally try to stop it if it was, all these horrible things are happening. And I don't, I just don't, I can't fathom that all these things that happen there, but if I go and I saw it...
I witnessed every single part of that. I would not stand up there and say...
I'm not, I'm not saying he did, but this is, this event, and we've asked, and I know Mr. Kramer has asked, you know, and we've explained the rules. If you don't follow the rules, you're gone. And you know what? If they don't follow the rules, they can never come back. Never. You know? That gives us all the reason in the world to say, you didn't follow the rules, don't ever come back.
So you will protect my...
And everybody in that park, I promise you, will be protected. I... Uh, and, and everybody in that park, I promise you will be protected. I promise you it'll be protected. If I have to go there myself and see it and talk. I love this town. I do. I don't, I don't care what anybody says or, or does. I work very hard to make our town a better place. And I represent you as Christians, myself, being one of you. And I represent the minorities that are minorities, not necessarily the great pride, but all minorities that want to go to the park. And so I think I've said enough. Um, I appreciate you guys coming and voicing your opinion. I'm glad I live in a town like Indian Trail. I'm glad we, we have small-town values. But you know what? We have to be fair and we have to do, they, lastly, you know they can go to the park. And I didn't have to say anything, but I, I wanted to put that out there. God bless y'all. Let's move on to the next subject. Come on. That brings us to, uh, well, let's, we can, let's take a five-minute break. And I mean five minutes. I mean, I don't mean ten minutes or fifteen. Let's go five minutes. That brings us up to law enforcement. Mr. Captain Mullis, come on up.
Well, it has been a long meeting, so I will keep it short and sweet. So I will tell you, you do not have a bunch of paperwork for me tonight. I sent you all an email. Hope you got it. But it is all of, everything that I normally print out for you. You guys have that in an email. You can view it, um, if you, if you so choose. But just to give you a few, um, quick updates, I know you like, guys like the numbers. For the month of July, um, there were either self-initiated calls or nine-one-one calls we took, or there were four thousand five hundred and six of those in the month of July. Out of that forty-five hundred and six calls, there were a total of two hundred and twenty-five reports taken. And as, as been mentioned, um, I know a lot of effort has been put on traffic and where we can park and where we can drive and where we can turn. In the month of July, in the town of Indian Trail, there were a hundred and thirty-five traffic accidents that, that we worked throughout the town. And like I say, a list of those are, are given to you there in that, um, that report for the traffic crash data. But, um, I also, um, let me see if I can get to it here. If you guys are interested afterwards, I went ahead, because I knew that, that, um, there were going to be some, some concerns about the Hayes Road intersection. I went ahead and printed the data and all I have is number of wrecks. I don't, I don't have at, who was at fault or what the outcome of those were, but I do have those total number of wrecks for that intersection from two thousand eighteen to present. So if you want to see it, like I say, we can talk afterwards and I can show you those, share those numbers with you. Thank you, Captain. You got any questions?
Any questions for Captain Mullis? You just do a great job, Captain Mullis. Thank you.
Just because I look good standing there.
Okay, that brings, that brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous. All right, brings us to public hearings. Mr. Dees, um, ZM twenty-two-four oh seven-one Younts Business Park.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If I may approach, I do have a present for you. We provided these a couple of years ago as a cheat sheet for you. We've had some changes specifically to the downtown districts. And so we've got new ones for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on, we do have three public hearings, um, tonight. I'm going to try to be as brief, but want to be thorough as well. Our first one is ZM twenty-two-four zero zero seven-one Younts Business Park. And this is a regular rezoning, which is why you see the ZM instead of the CZ. So a little bit about this request, um, it's to rezone two parcels to GBD. And this is in the Rosemary Park subdivision. It's point four-seven acres of wooded land and it is currently zoned SF1. The intent of this is to complete the assemblage of the commercial parcels. So we've had a couple of requests as this property owner has acquired parcels. They've come back a couple of times to, uh, make the zoning consistent with the properties they've acquired. So here's the subject property on the aerial and in the, the yellow is the previously acquired property and rezoning. And then the red are the new two parcels that were, um, acquired. Just to give you some perspective, um, if you don't know Rosemary Park, this is close to MCA Soccer Field. So we just highlighted the, the parcels in red, um, just to kind of give you an idea if, if you've not been in this area. Here's a street view photo of the front of the property and our beautiful zoning sign. And then here's your current zoning map. So in the beige color is your SF1. Your GBD is that purple bluish color and we're just trying to fill in those two parcels to, to match the surrounding. Future land use, um, this is where it gets a little bit complicated. We've talked about this in the past. This is an area that we really feel like that probably needs to be reassessed in the next comp plan update simply because, um, some of the lots don't perk, the lots are small. There's no sewer infrastructure out there and so developing SF1 is somewhat problematic. We do have the future transportation map, um, that is a part of the comprehensive plan. And we've kind of leaned into this with the previous requests to, to really justify this area moving to more light industrial. Younts Road is at some point planned to be a four-lanther affair. We know that that's a ways away, but it does point to it being more commercialized. So in summary, um, we're looking at rezoning to GBD. It is a consistent with the adjacent properties. The, the land is a little scattered with mixed use. There's some, um, older residential. There's some commercial. And then of course, the, the church and the, um, school in this area would be institutional. There's obstacles for residential development. So again, we, we will be reevaluating this area in the next update. But the comp plan does anticipate that this, um, is an activity center and that there will be more commercial development along Younts Road. Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request. And your consistency findings tonight, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan. Economic development goal number one, infrastructure goal number one. This rezoning request is reasonable in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of economic development and infrastructure. The requested action is before you tonight and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, I, we don't have a applicant presentation, I assume, correct?
No applicant presentation, yes, sir.
So I would like to, uh, open and close because we do not have any, uh, anybody signed up for public comments. Open and close public comments. Can I get a motion?
Motion to open and close public comments.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Do we have any council deliberation? Anybody want to say anything? If not, um, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ZM two zero two-four dash zero zero seven-one Younts Business Park as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous.
And I'll make a motion to adopt consistency findings as read into the record by staff for ZM twenty-two-four dash zero zero seven-one.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, Ms. Brandy.
All right, thank you. Moving right along, our next request is ZM twenty-two-four zero zero seven-four fifty-nine oh eight Old Monroe Road. And again, this is a conventional rezoning, no site planned for your review. So a little bit about this request, it's one parcel and we're looking at going from SF1 to MBD, which is Neighborhood Business District. This is located, um, along Old Monroe Road. It's point eight-five acres, um, of cleared land and recently a home was demolished, making way for the Old Monroe, um, improvements. And the intent of the request is just simply to help assist with marketing, um, for future commercial development. So here on the map, you can see in red the subject property. This, this blue is the commercial Neighborhood Business District for the Sagecroft Townhomes. So this parcel is a little less than an acre, really not enough land for commercial development, but we do feel like that will pair nicely with that commercial property that's already there, fronting Old Monroe Road. Here's a street view of the property. This is looking northwest on Old Monroe Road. And then looking southeast, you can see the, the townhomes in the back. It's directly across from Pinnacle Storage. And the current zoning map, again, you see that beige color for SF1. The blue color, um, light blue color coming through is CZ MBD. So it was a conditional zoning along with Sagecroft for commercial fronting Old Monroe Road. Certainly the current SF1 is inappropriate with the, um, the reduced conflict intersection improvements on Old Monroe Road. And again, just sharing the Sagecroft Village Concept Plan, um, so you can see those commercial buildings laid out there. This parcel, you know, could, could be open space, could be, um, you know, a variety of things. Maybe the, the pond goes on it or, or that kind of thing. It doesn't necessarily, you know, have to have a building, but it could help with the overall development of that commercial. Or you could put a very small commercial building on it. Future land use, um, I really like it when we get it right. This is mixed use and that's what you see in that area, um, for sure. And then it's a part of the Sun Valley Activity Center, so that helps support that commercial, uh, request as well. So as summary, again, we're going from SF1 to MBD. It's consistent with the surrounding zoning districts. And, um, the current land setting is mostly vacant, open land. But of course, it's going to transition to commercial with that Old Monroe widening project. And then the commercial development is anticipated with that previous approval. The future land use map shows mixed use and the existing conditions and future plans support this request. So your consistency findings for this project, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan. Economic development goal number one and land use goal number four. This rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of economic development and land use. The action requested is before you tonight and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, then I'm assuming there's no applicant presentation. That brings us to open, uh, to a public hearing. I have no one signed up, so can I get, uh, a motion to open and close public hearing?
Motion to open and close public hearing.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, uh, if there's no council deliberation, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. Um, I'll make a motion to approve ZM twenty-two-four dash zero zero seven-four, um, five-nine oh eight Old Monroe Road as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous.
And then I'll make a motion to adopt consistency findings as read into record by staff for ZM twenty-two-four dash zero zero seven-four.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, Ms. Dees, I think you have one more.
Thank you, Mayor. And the last rezoning and public hearing for the night is CZ twenty-fourteen zero zero three M. The shop's at Hanfield Village. Uh, the twenty-fourteen obviously indicates this is original approval that's coming back for a modification. So a little bit about the request, um, we're looking to modify only a portion of that existing CZ approval. It only affects about two-point-eight acres out of the original twenty-one-point-eight-four acres. And then the zoning stays the same. It's still going to be CZ general business within the overlay. It's just the conditions are changing. And so the intent on this request is to allow for drive-through facilities on a portion of properties along Wesley Chapel Stouts and allow for the use of a cigar shop. And we'll talk a little bit more in detail as we move through the presentation about those two conditions. So just to orient you, here's the aerial view. The current zoning map, you see the dashed lines in that bluish-purple color. That's your CZ GBD. And definitely you can see that this is one of our, um, activity centers that has done really, really well and developed and, and grown like the comp plan anticipated a long time ago. Future land use, um, shows this mixed use and commercial. And then just to orient you, if you're not familiar, um, the Sherwin-Williams building is to the right. East Coast Wings is to the left and then the proposed, uh, drive-through restaurant would be in the middle between those two buildings. So this picture helps us understand a little bit about why, um, this modification is before you tonight. So we're planners and we dream big. We love, uh, streetscapes. We love bringing buildings close to the, the road. We love street trees. We like to hide the ugly parking in the back. However, NC DOT has other plans and they've, they've crushed our dreams a little bit with this, this area. So that, that yellow circle that you see is the edge of the right-of-way state for the roundabout. And so, um, the applicant here tonight really has no other choice in developing this property than to shift the building back, um, which is discouraging, but it, it's the reality that we face. Also, along with this request is, um, a drive-through component. This particular parcel, um, had conditions on it. It singled out a couple of parcels within the huge twenty, almost twenty-two acre development. I think it's hard to justify pinning that on just this parcel when you think about the Hanfield Village Shopping Center with Culverts and Slim Chickens and then across the street Taco Bell and Wendy's. So they are asking for that restriction to be lifted as well. And here's just another view for you, um, from the Sherwood Williams parking lot. So a little bit more about, um, the request again is to, the two, two conditions that we're looking at modifying. All the other conditions remain in place. But it's first to allow the drive-through facilities on the parcels mentioned, um, which were not originally allowed to have a drive-through through ordinance two oh nine. And then to allow for the use of a cigar shop. And so here's just the original. If you'll see in two C, it talks about drive-through facilities should not be permitted on these parcels. B talks about the frontage of the buildings and how they be, should be constructed. Um, we, we know that that is no longer possible. And then this is a section of our code that talks about, um, the body piercing, tattoo, electric gaming and tobacco and vape operations. We, about two years ago, if you remember, um, we put some measures in place. We put some distance requirements that were pretty strong. We were being inundated with vape shops. Code enforcement worked closely with the sheriff's office to, um, address the issues. A lot of underage sales coming from those vape shops. Very, very bright lights, so bright they were distracting to the motorist. We've had quite a time with the vape shops and so that's why this regulation is in place. We did not anticipate that this would, um, necessarily affect an existing local business. This, this business that wants to locate in the Sherwood Williams building has, um, been in our jurisdiction for at least five years. We have not gotten code enforcement complaints from this business. It operates very, very differently. You have to be twenty-one to enter this facility. And so even though we know that they operate differently, when you drill it down, vape and cigar shops both sell tobacco. So it was a little bit hard for us to, to define it. And so that's why they're before you tonight to request that that cigar shop use, um, be included. Not, not vape, but the cigar shop, uh, be allowed within the Sherwood Williams building. Just, uh, this is the original twenty-fourteen concept plan for your review. And then this is the, um, proposed restaurant with drive-through facility. You can see where that roundabouts caused that building to, to be shifted back. And then this just in red shows you where that proposed cigar shop would be and take up space within that existing Sherwood Williams building. up space within that existing Sherwin-Williams Building. So in summary, the zoning's going to remain the same. We're going to have CZ GBD within the overlay. The only thing that would be changing are the two conditions that we've talked about, and the comprehensive plan anticipates further development of mixed use in this area and supports this request. The consistency findings, the proposed rezoning modification request is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan. Community engagement goal number one, land use and housing goal number one, land use and housing goal number four, and economic development goal number one. This rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because it promotes the community engagement, land use and housing, and economic development goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan by allowing new business opportunities, creating local jobs, and fulfilling future land use recommendations in the villages and corridors. The requested action is before you tonight, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? If we don't have any questions, it does have applicant presentation. I don't know, I think you did a great presentation. Do you, would you like to come up? Okay?
Good evening. My name is Tom Crouch. I'm here with the Moser Group representing this rezoning. Brandy did a great job explaining everything to you. Just want to give you a few finer points. First of all, we're, we're doing the drive-through rezoning for an Andy's Frozen Custard. If you've been to Ray Road, there's one on there. We want to do the exact same thing. We think it's a really great ice cream shop. Think it'd be a great addition there. And we actually brought some Andy's for everyone to try. We have a bunch of different flavors for y'all. So Chaffy has a cooler. Hopefully, it's still frozen. This was a longer meeting than I expected. I think it's still frozen, but we will have a bunch of flavors for you, so just please let us know what flavor you'd like to try. The second part of this is the cigar shop. As y'all know, you've probably seen the one next to the IHOP. It's a great business. We wanted to relocate them. They have a private smoking lounge, and we think this would be a great addition to their, their current business as well, to have the smoking lounge relocated from the 74 location to this location, to allow a little more flexibility as far as having outdoor area and that kind of thing. The operator of the cigar shop is here with me tonight. You can ask him. They don't do any kind of vape or products like that. Like I said, the, the lounge is actually private, so there won't be people coming in there, you know, trying to buy stuff underage. They do a great job, run a great business, and don't have any of the obnoxious lights or anything like that, that the town was trying to get away from when all the vape shops moved in. So thank you for your time, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't see any questions, Tom. If you would, maybe just have a seat, and let's, let's, oh, we do.
No, I'm good. I'm, no, I'm good. So they're going to, well, I, I asked a question. Can I ask?
You go right ahead.
So y'all are going to relocate the one that's, like, right now currently with the urgent care?
We're going to relocate the lounge, so.
Yeah, no, that's good. Actually, that's a positive thing. I've had complaints. People have said that they smell the smoke in the urgent care and their kids. You know, there's, there's a lot of concern there. So actually, that makes me happy. Thank you.
That, that was one of the concerns we tried to avoid, and there'll be a little bit different construction on this building to, to hopefully avoid that happening at all.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions? If not, we do have some, do have some public comments.
I don't know if it's allowed, but I can bring the ice cream up now if anyone wants to try while they're listening.
Well, you know what that kind of reminds me of is, what, what's the TV show where, where they come in and try to, try to get you to invest? No, no, the, it's very popular show where they come in and they try to sell you their business, and it's Shark Tank. They always give samples for, for them to try.
I like them with samples.
That's kind of what I feel like tonight, except I'm, I'm not one of those guys that have $100 million, or probably more than that, but anyway. I, I personally, does anybody, did you want to, want, you, why don't you go put it in the freezer?
I can do that.
Yeah, go put it in the freezer, and then, and then if you don't mind, we'll, we'll, because we, it's just going to take longer.
Yeah, we'll move forward.
Perfect.
Okay. I'm sorry. Let's see. Mike, is it Schmitz?
Schultz, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, Schultz, I'm trying to read you right, and that's okay.
It gets massacred by everyone.
Do the motion to open public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't do that. Yes, let's, please do that.
Motion to open public hearing.
All right. All in favor? Unanimous. I'm sorry, I needed to do that first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and council members. My name is Mike Schultz. I'm with the law firm of Cranford Buckley, Schultz, Thompson, Allison. And Bowie, I have with me Matthew Goode, who is one of the owners of the cigar, current cigar store that's in Sun Valley Commons, and his father Larry. We're here speaking in, in opposition to the approval of the cigar store portion of, of this requested action. My understanding, and Ms. Deese can confirm this, that the Planning Commission voted four to one to deny this petition. And, and here's why we think that was an appropriate and correct one. BNL has a tobacco, existing tobacco store. It is, the proposed tobacco store is within the 2,000-foot prohibition that this town has approved. And so it is lumped together by its express language with vape shops, and tattoo parlors, and tobacco stores. And, and as a brief aside, to the extent that we make an exception for tobacco because it's different than vape, then what's the argument going to be with respect to that zoning, or that town ordinance? When the vape store comes along, there, there is a reason, I think, that the town imposed that requirement. And I don't think it's asking too much to have the applicant simply move 2,001 feet to open their new cigar store. We've been operating without any complaints. I think that can be also confirmed. There've been no issues, no complaints about the cigar store. There's no smoking in this current operation. There's no vape sales. There's no tobacco, I mean, no pipe tobacco product sold. There's no chewing tobacco. It's a high-end cigar location. It came here a little over a year ago, and it's in reliance, too, on, on the town's ordinance that says can't have one 2,000 feet or closer. The other, other issue is, you got, there's, there's another reason for that ordinance and enforcement of that ordinance. You've got two schools there, the Goddard School and you've got Sun Valley. And my understanding from at least our view of these maps is that Sun Valley is just across the street. Yeah, we're also in that same vicinity, but you gotta drive and make several turns to find this BNL cigar store. It's not in plain view to these young folks. There are provisions in the ordinance that allow you to modify that. But, but, but what's required to do that is that you, you, the factors you consider are the number and location of existing businesses, and, and similar businesses, and the proximity to any private or public school, and the overall health. Well, it, it's allowing this cigar store does not move that school. That school is still in proximity to this cigar store. The, the second comment would be, it's not, BNL is not saying, well, we want something that you can't have. What BNL is saying is that we've moved to Sun Valley Commons. We came here. It was a shell. We've invested a great deal of money in this location. We run a good business. We don't sell the vape products, as I indicated, the chews. And we, we rely on the fact that the ordinance says we must limit this to, to 2,000 feet or less. So I've got much more, but I think we're, I respect your time and, and the requirements. If you have any questions, I think Matthew can best address those.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Matthew? Dennis?
Yes, sir.
I'm still trying to figure out exactly where your, your store is.
We are at the end of the Sun Valley Commons Shopping Center, where Sun Valley 14 Cinemas is.
Where Sun Valley what now?
The, the movie theater.
Movie theater. Okay, you're in that complex?
Yes.
So where we're talking about this other is across the street?
Yeah, about 150 yards approximately.
Okay.
Clarice?
They mentioned the Goddard School. That's not within 2,000 feet, though, is it? Yeah, that's, that's half a mile down the road.
Dennis?
So do people smoke their cigars, or whatever you're selling, at your location?
Not in the interior, no. It wasn't permitted when we signed off on our lease.
So you're kind of like a retail store where they go in, buy their product, and leave?
That's correct.
Okay.
And you, you can understand the effect of, of the change in the law from you can't smoke inside unless you were grandfathered in in 2010, and unless you're a standalone July 1. My understanding is that that was changed to allow smoking indoors if you, on a non-single standing building, if the landlord approves. So this is a very significant difference than what, what BNL does.
I have another question that goes along with that. Would you consider yourself to be a high-level, high-priced cigar? I'm assuming you sell cigars in this way? Okay.
Yes, sir.
So would you consider yourself to be a high-priced cigar, or medium price, or lower price?
Well, we've got prices that run the gambit from, say, six bucks all the way up to 40.
Hold on. One at a time. Go ahead, go ahead, Todd.
Thank you, sir. So you and this proposed new cigar shop would both be, I mean, she might get an answer too, would both be within the, what we call the entertainment district?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Tom?
I'm sorry, I interrupted. I was wanting to know what your average check is.
Average ticket checkout?
Yeah, ticket, yes, sir.
Between 25 and $30.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody have any questions for Brandy? Did, did anybody else? No? Okay. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That brings us to Matthew. Matthew Goode, is, are you going to, are you our Matthew? How about Larry? Larry, are you going to speak?
I don't need to.
Okay. Well, you're, you're on the list. That's the, that's the reason I, there you go. All right. Well, that, that covers that. So if I can get a motion to close.
Motion to close public hearing.
Public comments, okay. All in favor? Unanimous? All right. If there's not any other, does counsel want any deliberation, or you just want to move into a motion and vote? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the conditional rezoning request, CZ 2014-003M, the shop's at Hanfield.
All in favor? All in favor except for Councilman, Also Brooks down there. Councilman, I can't recognize you down there with that mask on, Councilman.
I'll make a motion to adopt the statement of consistency that's read into the record by staff for CZ 2014-003M.
All in favor? Again, all in favor except for Councilman Also Brooks. Thank you. Thank you.
Did that cover the shops? Both?
Yeah, they cover both.
Drive-through and both, everything? Okay.
Yes, all in one, yes, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to old business, Chestnut Parkway, CIP ordinance amendment and budget amendment. Is this, this is, this is, this is you? Okay.
Hank, let's see. Hang on.
Okay, hold on.
I think the next item, isn't it Chestnut Parkway, Mr. Hunsinger?
Okay, Chestnut Parkway, Mr. Hunsinger. Okay. I'm sorry.
He's got several items in, Ms. Cox.
All right, I don't have any presentation. I'm just going to try to explain this to you. As you recall, Chestnut Parkway Project, we had several parcels that we entered in a, in a local agreement with NC DOT to basically go, go through the process with these folks because these parcels were touching both projects. One on one side, Old Monroe Road and our, and our tie-in of our Parkway, and then on the other side, 5808, which is a chestnut connector beside the building over here, and our Parkway. So this, this, this additional funds I'm requesting tonight is for the parcel that were on the Old Monroe Road side of the, of the project. There were three parcels that were negotiated with, through NC DOT, and what the town did, we cut, basically cut a check. And based on the interlocal agreement, if they, through the condemnation process, which I think one or two of these parcels went to condemnation, and through the condemnation process, if the funds were exceeded, the town would have owed the additional. So they did a pretty good job in the sense that we don't owe but additional $19,924.98. And so I talked to Jim, the Finance Department, and we decided to continue to use the capital reserve fund for these additional funds, and I'm requesting the council to approve an amendment to the CIP ordinance for those funds I just stated, and also the budget amendment for that.
Any questions? Can I get a motion?
I'll recommend a motion to approve the amended CIP ordinance and the accompanying budget amendment for Chestnut Parkway.
All in favor? Unanimous? Go ahead, Mr. Hunsinger.
Yes. All right, Indian Trail Complete Street. All right, so no, no presentation on this one as well. As you may have read in the memo, we had a, two consult, we had two consultants, a design team, which is our civil design, and our utility consultant. Because I wanted to, based on, I've already went out and hired, not hired, but had a consultant go out and take a, do a, a street lighting plan, and got thinking about it and thought, well, we probably need a light at the intersections where downtown intersection and our Gribble intersection, where we're going to have the nice masked arms, traffic signals, and so forth. So I requested them to add their, our signal team to add a street light on one of the masked arms. So you'll have an overhanged street light attached to top of the masked arm for each intersection, to light up the intersection. Well, that wasn't on the original design, and so we added that later on after I got to looking at the lighting plan. And so that was an additional $5,000 to the design team just to add that light, those two lights. And then after that, we got to talking to the utility consultant, and, you know, when they, we entered into in this contract, this has been several years ago, and at that time, we had, we hadn't added the Union County Water and Sewer additions, that the county came back with us to, to ask for our help, meaning, as you recall, what we're doing with them are, is we've entered a local agreement to design water and sewer upgrades. The town will have to flip the bill on some of those, and the county will pay for the rest. Well, that was an add-on, so the consultant wasn't aware of that at the time when he entered into the contract with, as a sub to our design team. And so now he's asking for additional $15,000 for the additional time it has taken to get this project moving forward. So I will request an additional $20,000 to the design phase of the CIP ordinance for this project. Now, answer any questions?
Any questions? Can I get a motion?
I recommend a motion to approve the amended CIP ordinance and the accompanying budget amendment for Indian Trail Road, or, sorry, Indian Trail Complete Street.
All in favor? Unanimous?
All right. Thank you all.
Ms. Cox?
Good evening. In your agenda packet, there are one, two, three, four, five resolutions for condemnation. We've been through this process before, but this is necessary, that we have to attach the resolution to the complaint to show that I, in fact, as your attorney, have the authority to file these complaints. This is for the Indian Trail Complete Street project. This is not unusual. It doesn't mean that the cases are going to go to trial, but this is just what we have to do to keep the case on track, the project on track, because we can't go out to bid until we've either received the deeds or filed these lawsuits.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for this?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for condemnation for the Indian Trail Complete Street project as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to be before you. Perfect, it was working.
Perfect, it was working. Just wanna kind of give you all an update on the feasibility study and business plan update for the multi-generational rec center. As you know, this has been a process back in 2021, when council adopted the master plan. Part of one of the major goals and recommendations was to conduct this feasibility study and business plan. Fast forward to May of this year, we selected our vendor, and then in July 1st, we really kind of kicked off with the community input. Just kind of giving you a timeline of where we stand and where we're going. July and August, there's been a survey, not sure if you've seen it, hopefully you have, several times, out to the community. We're calling this our intercept survey. July through September, staff, and then we'll also work with mayor, council, and other key stakeholder interviews with our consultant. Towards the end of August and September, we will have a statistically validated survey that's sent out, as well as another community survey that kind of just digs in a little bit deeper to what exactly people are looking for, the dates, the times, and things of that nature. September 25th, we'll host a community meeting right downstairs, and then, as well as some in-person stakeholder meetings. October, November, we'll work with our consultant to share those survey results back out to council and the community, and then we'll also share and be kind of really digging in on that performant business plan. Again, it's important to understand that the community's asking for this, but then we also want to make sure that we understand that apple that we may bite into of what it's going to cost and what those potential revenues are. Looking fast forward through December, December 10th will be before you with the consultant for a final presentation to council. Right now, everything is being driven by the public input, which, you know, obviously, in my opinion, it should be. Like I said, we sent out a survey, email, website, text message, flyer, direct mail, sign at the park, at the events, signs in neighborhoods. Short of knocking on everyone's door, we are asking for that input. To date, we've received 1,551 surveys. Comparably, I think that's the most that we have received as a town, right? You know, you look at the other plans, 1,300-plus have self-selected that they are Indian Trail residents. The other folks have selected, they're not Indian Trail resums, but still utilizing the parks. And I think it's just important, obviously, there are 40,000 residents in Indian Trail. Each survey represents one voice. Sharing some just key results with you here, not gonna go through the entire survey, we do have that if you'd like it, you know, to kind of take a deeper dive in. But this question was, how supportive are you of Indian Trail Park and Rec and developing a community recreation center? It's multi-generational, multipurpose. So, again, this is just north of 1,500 responses. Eighty-seven point seven-three percent of the people said that they were either very supportive or somewhat supportive. Less than six percent indicated that they were not supportive at all. How willing are you to pay? You know, this is a deep question, because you can want things, but are you willing to come out of pocket and pay for it, right? Seventy-three point five percent of the people indicated that they would be willing to use the center and pay for it as well. Again, this is very, very high amount of public input. Working with our consultant, our initial goal was 500. I joked with my team and said, I'm gonna challenge you to get 1,000. We're up to 1,500, you know. Again, we'll have some more input from the statistically validated survey, the community survey, and then the community meeting as well. And we're excited for it, right? You know, we want to hear everyone's opinion. We want this center to be something that the community is looking forward to. You know, if we do build it, we want them to be lining up a day one, right? And excited to take it and make it their own. We don't want to build something and then say, here it is, use it. And that's what we're doing, right? We're working through the community, they're telling us what they want us to build. And then again, as we move forward, we will work with you, we'll share those results back. And again, anytime someone has a question, it's right here on our website, but willing to answer any questions that you all may have this evening.
Mr. Also Brooks?
Out of the, excuse me, out of the 1,340 surveys that you had, you said were deemed to be an Indian Trail, were any of those other ones in the unincorporated part of Indian Trail or?
So, the question was, are you an Indian Trail resident, yes or no?
Todd?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, is, the results are not surprising. I mean, we did the master park plan, and one of the surveys was some sort of center. It had a different name, I can't remember what it was, but you put in here stakeholders. Who's the stakeholders?
So, part of that is, you know, staff, part of that is mayor, council, and then we will also identify, you know, folks who, across the community, we feel are stakeholders, right? So, we'll invite some of our senior group folks in, we'll invite some of our user groups that you, that have used the facility before. We'll also put a call out that says, hey, if you are interested in having a more one-on-one focused interview rather than just filling out a survey, you're welcome to have that kind of conversation with us and the consultant.
No business owners?
We can reach out to business owners, yeah.
I think that'd be a good idea, is to see, you know, economic impact that they'll, it might have. You know, I just a suggestion.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
I'll leave you in charge, though. Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Any other questions? Just, Hayden, this great, great job. And it's, you know, music to my ears to see what we saw. And, you know, I would like to see every one of us up here on council get behind this and run with it. I think we could, we should, and the reason I say that is, is we can leave something here for generations to come. We can leave something that, you know, I'll revert back to the parks 12 years ago when there was a big fight against it, you know, and we went and we built parks, and I would say seventy percent of the people that were against the parks then used the parks now and are probably thankful that we have the parks. It's our chance to, it's our chance to do something for the town. And Todd, you made a good point. I would think and I would hope that our businesses would really be excited about it. I mean, here's your chance to really bring in something that lots of people can, you know, can come, you know, with maybe pickleball courts, maybe with whatever's going on there. I see large community centers or community centers, and I see how busy they are, and I see what kind of restaurants are around them, and, you know, this fits in with our park unbelievably. I mean, it's all, it'll be one happy, it'll be happy place. So, anyway, I hope we all get behind it. I hope we get behind it and talk to the residents and get pumped up about it and work together on this. That would be, that'd be my dream. So, thank you, Mr. Kramer, and we'll go on to the next Rogers Road sidewalk update. Mr. McLaurin?
Bobby, if you'll put those slides up, stop right there. Stop right there.
Thank you.
We approached this matter with you on June 11th, at your June 11th meeting, and the consensus at that time was that we were not gonna do anything with it, we were gonna reach out to the church, which is located right here, and the parcel owner, to see if they're interested in coming into city. And that would give us really good grounds to fix sidewalk. The church has said they're not really interested in being annexed. According to the planning director, this person right here said if they're annexed, they want to do high density, and I know that, you know, we're not in favor of high density. So, we're kind of stuck in the middle. You've got the city property here, and you've got city property here. So, we've got this little area that splits right here with a broken sidewalk. Sidewalk, Bobby, show the next slide if you would. Yeah, that one right there. That is being caused by stormwater issue. At the time, June 11th, when we spoke to you, we estimated the cost at eleven thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. My question to you is, this is kind of a no, pardon the pun, a no man's land, would you like us to fix it? And if so, we would ask that we be authorized to repair it at an amount not to exceed 14,000. Why do I say 14,000? Just in case we get in there and there's some problems that we're not aware of. If you do not want us to repair it, then what we would do is we would write the property owners officially notifying them that the property is in need of repair, we would also notify DOT. The pros of fixing it is it connects two parcels of the town. The cons of that, if you will, is that we're going in an area we've never been before. So, if the collective wisdom of the council is to direct us to fix it, then we need to have some explanation in the motion of why this is a special case. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Gay?
I'm just kind of shocked at the price, and I wonder, I mean, can't you put a corrugated pipe through there? And first of all, what's the reason for the stormwater issue to wipe that out? Was the pipe not big enough, and so it went around it, and so, and collapsed everything? I would think that you could put a large corrugated pipe in there and come in and fill around it and put new sidewalk on top.
I tell you what, I'm gonna ask Mr. Hunt Singer and Mr. McLamb to come up to the front and be able to talk about that, because I'm more familiar with that than I am. Both of us had not planned to wear bow ties tonight, it just happened.
So, the stormwater issue is gonna be water flowing from the tree line towards the road. I don't know what the total acreage is, but it's quite a bit of water flow in that direction. So, you have water coming that direction, then you also have backwater from the ditch, the water trying to go from this picture from right to left, my right to left. I guess it would be the same for you. So, those are your two different stormwater issues. The reason for the price, everything is a lot more expensive than what you would think that it is. So, you have to replace, at a minimum, we have to replace four sidewalk panels, we have to put in a concrete pipe because it's within the DOT right-of-way, we can't do corrugated metal there.
Okay.
So, the concrete pipe, and then there's the potential that we're gonna have to build a junction box on the backside of the sidewalk or a contractor. Somebody would have to build a junction box on the backside of the sidewalk to be able to catch that water, rather than it just being an open pipe and flowing under the sidewalk itself. Yep, and then in the estimate is a little bit of gravel, because whoever's gonna go in there and do that work is gonna mess up the gravel in the church's parking lot, and we want to leave something always better than how we found it.
I think catch basin's probably gonna be pretty pricey, isn't it?
Yes. Yeah, the box structure itself, they're never cheap.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
First off, I want to thank you, because at the end of that valley church right there in between there, unincorporated, there was a Town of Indian Trail City Limit sign, which the city limit's actually way down the road. But I asked 22 years ago they ought to take that sign up, and I appreciate you finally doing that. So, I appreciate that. But, of course, I didn't know I lived in Indian Trail and lived there, because the sign was over there.
Right.
And I'm like, I'm outside. Well, I got, when I got my tax bill, I knew where I live. So, the, but no, you know, schoolchildren walk down there from the neighborhoods, all that, so it connects there. I don't know if people know on Rogers Road, Shallow is down there, you got a couple churches with daycares and different things, so, and then, of course, there's two elementary schools, and then they walk around to the middle school and the high school here, so it's, someone's gonna get hurt on it eventually, or possibly.
So, you said not to exceed 14,000. Does that mean you have an estimate going up to 14,000, or you haven't done a complete estimate?
The original estimate was 11 and some change, like I told you, just in case we get in there and find something we don't know about, instead of stopping, having to come back to y'all for further discussion, further debate.
A little contingency.
Yeah.
Todd?
Are we ready for a motion, or?
I have a question, though, to be honest.
He's got a question. Go ahead.
And I'm not speaking for or against it, but I see the church right there. I mean, of course, that's not church property. I'm just curious if, you know, they didn't want to come into the town, does it cost them, and I, you know, churches don't pay taxes, I don't think, so it wouldn't cost them to come into town. Is there any benefits for the town for the church to come into town?
Well, the only thing it would cost them is the stormwater fee. They don't pay property tax, but I think they pay stormwater fee. And so, I think we would have loved to have them in the town, but as you know, involuntary annexation is no.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying, of course, you can't do that.
It'd fill in a doughnut hole, too.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is, is, I mean, we are within 10 feet of their property line, so, and if it's not gonna cost them money, I don't, what is stormwater fee? How much is that?
Fifty-six dollars a year.
For a business?
No, it's more than that, probably.
Yeah, it's more than that, because church is not considered residential, obviously, so we would have to measure the imperviousness out there and then figure out from there how many, so I couldn't tell you raw, how much they would have to pay, but it would be more than, you know, fifty-three or sixty-three dollars, which is residential.
Jim, I'm almost positive churches are taxed state. Federally, they're exempt, but state, they're not, because I deal with a lot of churches buying things, they have to pay the tax. So, maybe they're frowning upon town tax, I don't know, but.
They don't pay property tax.
Okay, but state, they have to pay.
They have to pay state tax? Well, they should pay, that shouldn't have anything to do with us, anyway, right?
No, I thought, I thought they were frowning on it. I didn't know they were town taxing them.
And I don't want them to pay anymore, I'm just curious, is, if there was a benefit for the town to have the church in there without them paying anything? And it, it just looks like to me that the church would want to get it, would be very interested in fixing it, because, I mean, it's practically on their property. So, you know, I get it, I get it, and I'm not saying one thing or another, but I just, it'd be nice if they would, you know, cooperate a little bit, but.
Question?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Dennis.
Didn't, refresh my memory, the county originally put the sidewalk in? Who originally put it in, the developer?
DOT wrote.
So, I believe it was originally put in actually when the church built their property. The town got a grant through CRTPO, who was here earlier back in 2008-ish, 9-ish, somewhere in there. We put in four miles of sidewalk through that CMAT grant, so we did Unionville, Indian Trail Road, and then Rogers Road. Part of our grant application was we said that this portion of sidewalk, along with a couple of other portions, created that full connection to get us from the end of Rogers Road at Town Limit where that sign is, all the way back, we said we connected three or four schools, 20 neighborhoods, whatever it is, all the way to a commercial center being Sun Valley.
So, Indian Trail did put the sidewalk in?
We did not put the sidewalk in, we put the crosswalk in that's right up from it, but we did not put the sidewalk in. It was already there before we built our sidewalk section, so it would have been put in by the developer, because NC DOT doesn't build sidewalks, so it would have had to have been put in when the church built their property, which was developed in the county, because it's not part of Indian Trail.
Okay.
Okay, that's it, that's all, that's my question, is if there's no more questions, somebody want to make a motion? Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that the town repair the sidewalk on Rogers Road as is in the best interest of the safety of the citizens of Indian Trail at a cost not to exceed 14,000 dollars.
All in favor?
Hold on, do I have to add something?
Can I suggest that you put into your motion and that it connects, the repair connects two portions of town property or properties inside the town limits?
And to add on to the back, since the sidewalk connects two portions of Indian Trail Incorporated.
Yeah.
Is that good?
That works.
Thank you.
That works.
Thank you.
All in favor? You now.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, brings to new business, Manus, uh, Manus Drive abandonment, Mr. Hunt Singer.
Mayor, council, um, you just approved a rezoning for, uh, a development called Yount's Business Park. Um, this is, um, request is from the developer for that park. You may know him, his name is Cam Hams, he used to own Cam's Incorporated Landscaping right down the street. Uh, he owns, uh, two LLCs that own the properties that they're wanting to develop through there, uh, and so he's made this request because he needs the additional, uh, area to make this development happen. So this is the plat, the abandonment plat you see in front of you. Um, right, as you see in blue, is the portion of Manus that we're, uh, that he is requesting be abandoned. Uh, you see on the top screen that most of that property above is owned by First Baptist Church, so, uh, the way this abandonment would work is that the church would be able to utilize this portion, the orange portion of the pro, of that right-of-way, because they touched that, and then, uh, uh, the LLCs below would be able to utilize the yellow portion of that right-of-way to, to build that business park that was shown on, uh, Brandy's other slides, which I probably should've asked for. I don't know why I did this, I could've asked, use your slides, so that's my fault. Put extra work on myself, didn't I? All right, and then, so, if you look at the aerial, again, we're talking about Mass Drive, which is, I know it's hard to see the parcels, but right through here, that's the right-of-way. As you can tell, it's a completely wooded, nobody can get through there with a car, nobody's ever used it. Um, on the other ends of that section of right-of-way, there is residential folks that access it, so obviously that's why, uh, the advocate's not asking for the all of Manus Drive to be abandoned, it's just the portions that touch their property. And so these are the lots that he's trying to develop off of Yount's Road and Brown Road at the bottom of the screen. So, uh, as staff, we don't see an issue with this abandonment, uh, request, and so I would ask that, um, that do the council approve a resolution to move forward with this abandonment process, uh, under statute, uh, one six zero eight dash two nine nine? And I'll a- answer any questions.
If there's no questions, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of intent to close Manus Drive as presented.
All in favor? Abandonment.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Great discussion items. Uh, discussion of Indian Trail Complete Street, eliminating underground utilities, reducing the width of the sidewalk, Councilmember, uh, Amburgy.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Evidently, certain individuals don't find this popular discussion that we've discussed in the past, however, um, I was in for, I was all for it a couple of years back when we voted to put those lines underground, however, I didn't realize it was only for a third of the street, you know, the complete street. Um, I do believe that we're still in some sort of design phase to where I don't think it would cost that much for us to work with Duke, Duke Energy and just keep the poles above ground, um, and move them back, of course, and, um, the buried lines, I mean, it, we gotta think conservatively, I mean, you know, we're, it might co- cost us a hundred thousand dollars to redo the plan or what have you. The thing's been delayed for seven years, I don't think a couple of months would hurt anything, and I, I suggest we move the four point no, nine million plus to phase two, um, you know, to, that was what the money was intended, intentionally before from the state was, um, it was for streets, not utilities, so I, I think that we oughta reconsider doing that and trying to save the taxpayer four point nine million dollars on phase two.
Todd, would you come up, if you don't mind, and, and that's not what I remember the, us talking about, when we talked about it, there was a lot bigger cost, I believe, I could be wrong.
What cost them what, sir?
We're getting ready to find out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, um, when I saw this agenda item get popped up, I figured I'd get, uh, ready for some, uh, questions that y'all may have, and, uh, to come up with a schedule of what I think would happen if you go down this path as far as, um, uh, redoing the lines, and, uh, I believe the agenda item was about the sidewalks as well?
Yes.
We, okay, so reducing sidewalks. Okay, um, so right now, again, this is the design, this is the widest part of that design, you know, we're gonna put turn lanes in that section of, of Indian Trail, but we're also on phase two gonna build a, uh, a dual-left turn lane, uh, median. So widest, widest part, three lanes, left, left-foot lanes, then you got curb, and you got ten-foot sidewalk on both sides, that's everywhere throughout both phases. So, phase one and phase two is gonna look like this, and this is a phase two rendering, but it, we've got the streetlights we wanna put up there, they're gonna be a foot off the back of curb, you're gonna have ten-foot wide sidewalks, that is the design right now. Um, now, I'd like to give you kind of an example of another town and city that's, had went down this road that we are going down on, um, and how they, they built it, which was how we're wanting to build it, um, and this is nothing new, I didn't even know this, uh, Holly Springs North Line did this when I, we were going through this Complete Street project, but I got to looking at other towns and cities, and, uh, I, I noticed this aerial, and this is, um, very, uh, close to what we want our future downtown to look like. So if you look at that piece of parcel right there, you see in front of that, you see that section in yellow right there I've highlighted, that is actually a twelve-foot multi-use path that they built. They didn't build ten, they built twelve. Now, multi-use path at ten is minimum, and we're doing ten because we are restricted with a lot with property along Indian Trail Road, especially in the downtown corridor, 'cause again, we do not wanna buy out businesses if we have, don't have to, correct? So, what you do is you build it first, and that's what they did, they built it first hoping that development would come later. Well, then they build a building out there, um, along that path, the developer did, all right, so if you go to street view, that is that building now. That is that same ten-foot wide side, or twelve-foot wide sidewalk, and I'm gonna demonstrate it for you, that is twelve foot right there, and then the developer had to come in, build eight foot of that, plus the building, and that is what we want to do. We want to build the ten-foot first, then if we, then we come back later, put the street trees in, or make them put the street trees in, and then, uh, they add more, and then we still, uh, get more than even ten in the future. We'll have probably fourteen or fifteen foot wide. And then that's the corridor you want, you want the benches, you wanna build outside dining, if they wanna eat outside, that's the goal. And if you don't do it this way now, then, um, we gotta drop back and punt and figure it out, if you don't wanna put five-foot sidewalk in. Now, underground, here's what the problem is with underground and, and, uh, is the schedule modification, I call it, if you wanna go down this road, it's not gonna be that easy to change that design. First of all, you've got the utility consultants are gonna have to get back with our, every one of those utility companies, and there's about eight of them, I think I listed them back in June on a presentation, get back with them and figure out how to get the overhead, first of all, you gotta get Duke to approve the overhead. Now, granted, they put new poles out there, but they've gotta move them back further than what they are now. So, again, you gotta have that done, then you gotta get consultants to get with Duke to try to figure out how, how they're gonna put the lines in there, that's, I'm telling you right now, that's a six-month, if not a, a year, uh, negotiation right off the get-go. You can work on the utility, the civil side design while you're doing that negotiation, but again, I have no idea how long it's gonna take. So then, we can't do anything, we can't go in the right-of-way or anything, or adjust our right-of-way until that process is done, well, if you adjust this right-of-way now, you're gonna take a year to do it, because you gotta go back to every property owner you just asked for PUE for and renegotiate. And I don't even know how that happens when we're already doing condemnation on some of them. And I'll let the, the attorney speak on that in a minute. So, cost, and these are rough costs, but these are the best I can do, uh, in a short period of time I had this to prepare for. Civil design, right now, we're at eight hundred something thousand dollars in civil design. Well, I'm, I'm telling you right now, if we have to change that design, change utilities and everything else, it's gonna cost you around three hundred thousand. Utility design, again, they've gotta go back and talk to all these people, it's gonna take a year, they got, that's labor on them, sitting around here for another year renegotiating with these consultants, that's seventy-five at a minimum. Right-of-way, we've already expended P, this is just PUE now, four hundred thousand dollars in, of public utility easement, that, that's Duke Power, that's what we had to have, plus with the private utility companies. We spent four hundred thousand right now. You go back and adjust that, you're gonna have to get wider PUE because now you've gone aerial. That means we've gotta go behind a ten-foot sidewalk, that's a minimum of thirty feet, so that is more right-of-way, and I'm telling you right now, I don't know who we're gonna buy out if we start doing that. That doesn't have full takes on there, so we may end up buying out a couple people just because now we're gonna do an aerial again. Um, so right now, without full takes, you're at seventy-four, seven hundred fifty thousand because you've gotta get the consultant to tell us to renegotiate with everyone. That's gonna take a long time. And then, construction delays, so I'm figuring two years to delay the project, figure three percent cost, uh, add-on every year, so you're at that number, so you're at two point four two five million, which is half of the five million we're talking about. So, beyond that, um, you've gotta change your down, your plans, you have to go back, change your downtown master plan, comprehensive plan, your PEP plan, and UDO, because now we don't wanna do multi-use paths, and that's fine, we can do that, uh, it's just gonna take time, but we can change things. But with y'all's direction, that, we'll be happy to do it, but, you know, that's, that's the reality of it, we, uh, we delay this, unfortunately.
Mr. Bar.
I'll take, I'll take questions.
The, um, is this both modifying the utilities and the sidewalk?
Hmm?
Just modifying both?
The sidewalk's not, not a difficult part of, of the situation. Going from, going from ten to five is not that difficult, so I ain't even factoring the sidewalk, this is just, just going from underground back to aerial.
Okay.
Yeah, so, that's gonna be some cost, but I don't think that's gonna kill us because you're not asking to add more right-of-way to that because you're reducing, but, but again, you're gonna have to have a planning strip, so it's not like we're moving the sidewalk back in. The sidewalk stays where it's at, you're just reducing it and creating a planning strip between the curb and the sidewalk. Does that make sense? Okay.
Well, okay, can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely, I'm tr- I'm trying to answer your question as best I can.
You got to raise your hand and ask a question.
Yeah, I mean, you know, but, what he was talking, so anyway, but, yeah, we, back in the June meeting, I mean, you brought up three different categories of delays, and so, I mean, it looks like we've already got delays, um, and so for some of my, uh, own information is, uh, once we buy up the right-of-ways, then the first thing we do is start on the utilities, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and we can't apply for construction authorization from the DOT until we complete those utilities, or is that when we start the utilities?
That's when we, we complete the right-of-way acquisition.
So we can do, so we apply for that, so...
Yeah, so you got, yeah, you've got three parcels left for right-of-way, which is the Navajo parcels that we're waiting on right now. Once those are done, we can apply for construction authorization.
Okay, and then you got six months to get the bids in, right?
No, no.
That's what the contract said, something about that was, um...
You got six mon, I said six months to get utilities in the ground, that's my hope, uh, but it could be six months to a year.
I mean, you got six months to bid it out, according to, I think, the contract, says some language like that, I might be, you know, maybe I misread it, but, uh, anyway, you know, one of the things about the discussion was, is we got five million allocated from the, uh, state grant to do the utilities, and, and I know you're talking about cost, but at this point, since I've been sitting here is, you know, when we approved this, the cost of this project's gone up two million dollars, we're over fifteen million now, so estimated, so anyway, I, you know, I understand the concept of bringing it up because basically at five million cost to do a quarter million, basically we're spending twelve million dollars, over twelve million dollars a mile, estimated, to bury the utilities, so, and, I, I, I thought it was good to bring it up because no one anticipated that Duke Power was gonna come in here and put up new poles, and, and we're not burying the poles on phase two design, correct?
Oh, we can, we, we can, but I did not entertain that idea because consider how much it's gonna cost to do the downtown.
So if we're designing phase two, which is in the design phase, correct?
Correct.
To, to move the poles, and it seemed like, to me, it would be just part of the design to go ahead and say, well, let's move the poles here, just like we're going, designing in phase two.
Yeah, I, I wish it was that easy, but it's not that easy.
But it don't work that way?
No.
Okay, all right, that, that was one of my questions, is, you know, but, I don't know, I mean, as far as the sidewalks, I, I like to see them not go to the road to have some sort of buffer, I mean, I mean, with as much traffic we got out here, I think that's just a safety concern for me, but, anyway, that was the questions I had, was, you know, it, you know, but with your cost, as I was looking at what we could save on that five million that, you know, that we got from the state, so, yeah, uh, that's my questions, but, thank you.
Yeah, and, and again, let me speak to the sidewalk thing real quick. You know, normally you don't, yes, you don't wanna be near the road, but unfortunately we have constraints with this road, especially in the downtown corridor, we, we have no other, other way of doing it. I mean, you can't just keep pushing back. Again, you, if you wanna buy out businesses, I'm happy to tell you how much it's gonna cost you, but that's the reality of, we, I, I was trying to, remember now, I, I'm sorry, I hate to keep bringing this up, we went through stakeholder meetings years ago with every business owners, brought in each individual business or talked about this project, and the goal was not to affect these guys as much as possible, not to buy them out, uh, and, and they didn't want on street parking, so we didn't put on street parking out there. So we, we done everything we can do with these folks to try to make this project work and not infect their properties as much as possible, and so their reality is we have to put the sidewalks up against the roads, just, there's no other way of doing it. I'm sorry.
What we have is, we've got layman with no engineering experience questioning a graduate engineer who's worked on streets and these projects for years, and, uh, I suggest we just leave it the way it is because you know what's best, and long-term, this, your idea is gonna be the best way to go.
Friends?
Couple things, um, 'cause I know before, I think before I was on council, um, the topic of maybe leaving the median in also, or instead of having the, uh, third lane has come up, and thinking ahead, I was on Indian Trail Road, and I heard sirens, and I thought how much the fire department or the sheriff's office would appreciate, now I know I'm jumping ahead, but we're talking about saving money, so I'm saying it now in case it ever comes up, how much they would appreciate having that middle lane to clear, um, so they can drive through. The other thing, it's funny that you said it, I went to a conference two weeks ago, and, uh, I was here, town manager talking about Holly Springs, so I actually went through Holly Springs on my way back, got out and, uh, looked at the town, and I, um, I suggest we take a field trip up there to see, you know, um, how they did things, but, um, I got out and walked, it was on a Sunday, and traffic speed limit was twenty-five, and you did have people outside, um, eating, not only that, there was a band playing at one of the other restaurants, and then across the street, you can see where it still hasn't been developed. So you had a mixture of the older buildings, the newer buildings, the businesses, you had a younger crowd, you had an older crowd, and people outside eating, so, um, it might be worth taking a field trip up there, I've heard you say it before, before I was on council, but I, um, it was, it was good for me to see it with my own eyes, so that's all I have to say.
Yeah, by the pictures you showed, it was only one-sided I saw in Holly Springs, I believe, and then I saw, uh, telephone poles in the background there, right there, the telephone poles, and over here it looks like a car wash or something, don't have the twenty-foot side.
Yeah, if, if you go, yeah, if you drive, if you go back further, you'll see on both sides.
Like, my point is, though, at Lily Auction, Lily's Auction, the Train Depot, I don't know where you could possibly put these, these sidewalks at, in front of it.
There are actually churches still there, too.
True.
Yeah, so if you go down with Holly Spring, uh, they've got existing conditions like tr- uh, other buildings closer to the road, but they don't, they don't have that.
They don't, okay, I was just curious.
They have, they have short sections where they, they narrow down almost eight feet, seven feet, and that's what we're having to do with Lily's, is, is basically do that because, uh, we, we don't have, we're, we're not showing a good, a good cause to buy them out, so we have to live with where the, the existing condition is.
Todd?
I just, thank you for answering the questions and preparing that information is, you know, all along, I, I give you credit, is, I sat down with me, you, and Shirley Howe the first time we ever discussed this, and, of course, it's evolved, we've got Navajo extension, and we added another leg to the, uh, roundabout, so, you know, it's, you know, any project as you go through it, I think, has the ability to have rational discussion and, you know, move, and, but, you know, at this point, I'm kinda with you, is, if we can't change it and it's not practical, you know, then, 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 you know, I, I voted for it, so I say leave it as is. it as is.
Yeah, Tom, it's a good idea, I mean, to move money around if we can move it around, but unfortunately, we, we waited to, you know, the discussion just waited too late.
Well, we won't know unless we ask questions.
Well, that's exactly right.
And get further into it. And I'm not an engineer by no means, you know. God bless you. Thank you, man.
No problem. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Todd.
All right.
All right, do we wanna, you got down here for a motion? You wanna, uh...
No, there's no motion needed.
Okay.
You'd like to withdraw your motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, there's no motion to be made.
Okay, very good. Let me find my place now, let's see. Um, okay, uh, hold on a second. Where are we? Uh, discussion of Indian Trail, okay. Complete street limiting, okay, here we go. Next, discussion of having a general overall inspection conducted on town-owned facility, three twenty-one Indian Trail Road, Councilmember Ambergy.
Right. Um, you know, I propose that we have our investment inspected to see if it's got structural integrity, electrical, everything's good. I, I propose that we get the property inspected to see if it's fit for renting out. I have a, I had a proposal of making it, um, a community center at sixty-three ninety in square feet. Yeah, it's ugly right now, but we could spend twelve million dollars or more for a real fancy, uh, community center. But we could, uh, spend a lot less if this building was viable and we could, uh, save the taxpayer, you know, take two million dollars and make that thing look beautiful. And that's why I was wanting to check it out, because I mean, it appraised for six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars when we bought it last year. And the building alone was valued at two hundred and seventeen, give or take. So I, I think that we need to get it inspected, uh, to see if it's structurally sound, foundation, so forth.
Mr. Gay?
Uh, when I saw this on the agenda, I had asked to go over and look at it. And I own a metal building, and I've had the metal building that I own completely rewired in the past and, uh, and pretty much went through the whole, the whole thing. You don't really need somebody to go through it. I, Clarence and I walked through it today and pretty well pegged everything in the building. First of all, the electrical is a hodgepodge. It's, uh, I mean, it all works and there are breakers. There's probably what, Clarence, was there what, five or six different electrical boxes scattered around the building? So it's not really functional. You'd have to go through and, and take all those electrical boxes out and rewire the building, uh, to, to have any kind of practicality at all to it. Second of all, the building is a hodgepodge. There's barriers right through the middle of the building going all the way back to the, to the back room. It's, you would, you would spend as much to build another building as you would to go in. You know, you've got a heat pump and air conditioning in one section. You've got, um, a heater that's run by propane and from propane tanks in the back that's, uh, I mean, you know, and you can't, you might can heat it, but you don't cool it. There's no air conditioning there, so you got ductwork that would have to go through the entire building. And it comes right down to, uh, what is the highest and best use for that land there? So what you have there now is not adequate really for any more than what those folks are doing there. And they eventually would like to get out and go out in their own building and, uh, build a facility. So you got major money you'd have to spend on that building and, uh, you'd be better off to put it toward another facility.
Yeah, same thing though with, um, the property over there that was by the park is an eyesore. So we bought this with thoughts that we could get income off of the rent factor. Same thing with the blue building or purple, whatever color, I'm colorblind.
You were wrong, uh, meeting, I guess, because we bought the land just for the property, not for the existing structure.
I'm gonna ask you to raise your hand. You didn't raise your hand, you didn't raise your hand.
Oh, my fault. I'll finish my statement then.
Finish your statement.
Yeah. So with that being said, I mean, you know, we can bulldoze it down, you know, or we could spend less money revamping it. Churches do it all the time. They take over, uh, like downtown Charlotte, they took over Circuit City and made it beautiful. You know, so with that being said, I think we'd be justified in just spending less money to revamp something like that, rewire and whoop-de-doo, you're gonna tear out all the walls anyways.
Dennis?
So with that being said, that's my...
Circuit City was a large square, modern building with high ceilings. This is an old antiquated building that, I mean, it's, the structure will hold it up because it's metal structures that you have in it. But there's no way that you're gonna go in there and gut this thing out and turn it into a showplace.
Todd?
Um, question is, have we ever had the building professionally inspected?
You have not had an inspection on it. When we bought the property, we bought the property not necessarily being in the real estate business because that's not a traditional business. And so the idea was whatever tenants are there, are there, the lease was as-is, where-is. So if their air condition breaks, they repair it. It is month-to-month because if the town has plans for that building, whatever they may be, it gives them a chance to be in business, but also gives us time to decide what's best for the town. So the answer is no.
Okay. Um, well, so the question is, is really is, does the building have value? Because I know what, overall, he did a capitalization appraisal and it appraised at six hundred and thirty-five thousand. The twenty-seven hundred a month was deemed probably half the market value. So I think it'd be productive for the town to have the building professionally inspected to see if, is it cost too much to fix it up? If we do fix it up, is it, do we put it into a situation to where we can make it marketable? Where we can actually get a long-term lease instead of a month-to-month and maybe get five thousand or more? Or is it good for government usage stored? Or take all the aluminum out if it's a steel structure with a roof or whatever? You know, I mean, I mean, that's really, after looking at it, would be my suggestion as to whether it's a money pit or if it's worth, uh, doing something with, no matter whether it's a community center or renting it out or doing something else. But, I mean, I, that, I, I think that would be the practical thing to do is to have it looked at. I mean, just like when we bought the house and then after the person moved out, we found out it had asbestos and it wasn't worth fixing up. So I think, I think, in my opinion, is why not, why not have it looked at and see what, what it's capable of or not capable of?
All right, let's wrap this up. Clarence, go ahead.
So I can appreciate what the other council members are saying about the building, but my experience is that, um, for you to gut, so I went in the building, the restrooms are in the center of the building. If you're gonna move the restrooms, you're gonna cut into the concrete. If you're talking about inspections because you do, um, some kind of renovations, then you're gonna bring in an inspector. So you're gonna have to take out everything in the inside. I noticed the ceiling was leaking. You're gonna have to run new electrical, you're gonna have to have the inspections, you're gonna have to put up new drywall. And you're talking about, again, I respect what you say because I, I've remodeled houses myself to save money. But a lot of times in this market, a new home sells better than a renovated home. And so I, I think the route of gutting it just to make it look nice is almost the same as fixing up a car just so you can sell it. You put money into it. So I, I think the, the best thing to do is rent it for what it's at right now, tear it down when the time comes and build something nice and new and shiny where you can build it, where you can expand if you need to. You'll run into a lot of problems. And I'm saying this from a construction perspective. I think you'll run into a lot of problems to just renovate it now. I can appreciate, again, what you're saying, but I just don't think that's the right way to go with this particular building.
Mr. Gay, do you have anything else to say?
Pretty much, I agree completely with Clarence. He and I both know construction.
If you're agreeing on it and you're saying the same thing, let's move on.
Yeah.
Okay. And Todd, make it quick, because we're, we're keep going back and forth, so...
Well, you know, I mean, I gotta kinda agree with the appraiser that it has, uh, commercial value. And so, I mean, obviously, he, he didn't think the building would just be, you know, something that would be torn down. He didn't say that in the appraisal. So anyway, it just seems like there's, you know, different views on it. You can read the appraisal and get, you know, whatever commercial take you want on it from a commercial investment standpoint, but it, it just didn't sound like if you read the appraisal that it would make any sense just to buy it to tear it down. But that's just my view.
One last quick comment, please.
No, that, we're done. I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish the comment, I'm sorry. I mean, we, we've been back and back and back and back.
Very quick, it has a commercial value because it's bringing in twenty-seven hundred dollars a month.
I gotcha. I, I understand. It, it does, it does bring in value, but if I'm not mistaken, the, the building itself appraised for between sixty-eight and sixty-nine thousand dollars. So, uh, when, when you say the, the property appraised for, what was it, six hundred, what did you say?
Thirty-eight, that was a tax value.
Six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, then five hundred and seventy thousand approximately of that money is for the land, not, not the building. So, uh, you can shake your head, Tom, but that's, that's a fact. That's a fact. So, uh, the building, uh, is pretty worthless. And, uh, you know what, what, you know, what I don't understand is, is we talked about a, a community center many times for, for, for that, for that area. And, you know, I look at that building, I went by, and that's, I think, a little over an acre and a half, if I'm not mistaken. So you can imagine the, you know, what the, that land is worth, five hundred, approximately five hundred and seventy thousand dollars or, or close to it, uh, just for an acre and a half. Now, when you talk about an acre and a half, and I heard many times that that was wasteland and the, the, it was, you know, the, the, uh, property was, was useless, you know, and it, it was, but, but how can it be, even an acre and a half of it's worth five hundred and seventy thousand dollars? You know, guys, I, I, I would like to see, I, I look at that building, it's got five parking places in the front of it. I don't know how many parking places you, you could, you could get. It, it comes close to the road, uh, where there's so many things. I, I have a, a bigger vision for a, for a, a community center. And I think each and every one of us, not, not only on this council, but every single person that works in this, in this building knows that we bought that property for the property. We didn't buy it for the houses. We didn't buy it because there was asbestos, you know, when you, you say there's asbestos in the house. We didn't buy the house. We're not in the rental business. That's not what, that's not what we wanna do is rent out properties. What we wanna do is take that property and make a, uh, what would be nice if we made a nice community center on it and, uh, and build a, build an adjacent park with it. So many different things that we could do with that that's beautiful. And just, I, I, I wish we would think bigger and think nicer. That, that as a community center to me is, is a, uh, it, it wouldn't, wouldn't cut the mustard. But, you know, you wanna say it's worth six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars? Well, it's because of the land and not the property. And those, those houses, we talked about the whole time, tearing those houses down. And we talked, anytime we ever talked about it, we were tearing those houses down. So let's, let's get real and let's start, talk, let's, let's talk about what, what we really said back in the day.
You opened the de, the debate, correct?
I'm gonna let you speak for thirty seconds and you go ahead.
Well, you can't dispute the six hundred and thirty-five thousand capitalization appraisal for, for that land and property and building, so...
I just disputed it and I, and it, it is sixty-eight thousand dollars for the building and the land is six...
But that was, but that's a fact. You can read the appraisal.
Well, I can read the appraisal, but the appraisal says it's six hundred, sixty-eight thousand dollars for the building or sixty-nine thousand dollars a building. And the land is worth, so that tells me the land, you know...
I think that was the tax value.
It could be the tax value because the tax value is the land. But listen, from now on, we're gonna start talking the truth in here. We're gonna, what we talked about, what we did. When we bought that land, we didn't buy that, we didn't buy those buildings, we didn't buy those houses. We talked about tearing them all down and we did it. And everybody in this room knows it. You can take it out there to the public and say that, that we didn't, that we didn't, but we know we did. And so does everybody in here that sat here and talked about it.
The mayor said it was, uh, it's good for walkability, it's, uh, good for walking trails and green space.
It's, it's good for that, too.
Next to the park where the...
Yeah, that, yeah, I would love to see that.
It'd be beautiful.
I think it would be. I think it would, would be. But anyway, with that being said, do I, do we wanna, uh, do we have a motion?
No, there's no motion either.
There is no motion on that? Let me see.
Mr. Gay, you can move on.
Okay, so do, uh, so recommended motion to approve having overall general inspection performed. Do we wanna have an inspection, uh, performed? Do you wanna put, you wanna read that out, uh, Mr. Ambergy?
Go ahead, Todd. Read out the motion, do you have it in?
Is there gonna be no action taken by the council? Is that what I'm hearing? It's a waste of money to have it inspected.
Well, okay. I make a motion that we, the council instruct staff to, uh, have the building inspected.
All in favor? Mr. Ambergy and, and, uh, Todd, all against. Crystal, Dennis, Clarence. So it loses three to two. Okay. That brings us to, uh, discussion of naming rights policy and updating sponsorship for, for, uh, Councilmember Barber.
In discussion of the community center and different things, uh, I noticed the town of Morrisville, which is outside of Cary in Raleigh, uh, they have a facility naming rights policy they passed in May. Basically, what this policy spells out is you would have the staff, um, form a committee. You, you have outlining of processes of, you can put a name on a bench, you can put a name in a room, you can put a name on a park, uh, we can put a, we can sell a name on the, uh, community center. I mean, if Bank of America wants to give us a couple million to put their name on the center, or like you said, businesses getting excited about here about it, they may want to, you know, invest in it. Maybe we have the, uh, call printing pickleball courts or something, you know, and, uh, maybe there's a lot of families around here that like to have their name on the room or whatever. But the, uh, but also, if we're gonna solicit donations and things, and I think that's come up in the past about a community center, I think it would be, you know, proper to have a naming right policy on this. That way, there is a process they go through, there are rules, there may be financial parameters. And I'm not saying you gotta do this one, but, uh, but I do think, you know, my point is, is I think we ought to instruct staff to, you maybe come up with something, review this, maybe they got a better idea, maybe they say, hey, you know, we looked at it and we don't think we can do it here, you know, but, um, but I do think it's worth looking into to where is, if we're looking avenues how to pay for things, it would be good. I mean, you can go to town parks and ball fields and, you know, you see the whole outfield's got sponsorships and, uh, you know, also put in here the sponsorship, uh, thing, opportunities. Now, I know in the motion you recommend it, but I know we have a, uh, Parks and Recs has a part of their policy or process has sponsorships. So I'm not really looking to redo that. My thing would be is to review this and see if there's anything we would like to update or add to the sponsorship program we already have. So, um, that's what I'm kinda presenting is, as we're going through this process, I think, you know, we could let the staff review this, maybe come back with something, but, I mean, it's pretty common throughout the state and, uh, you see a lot of like Selma, revamped a, or did a nineteen thirty-nine gymnasium and turned it into a community center. Still got the hardwood floors, but you just see a lot of times when people are doing these things that you see all the list of the people in town that donated or helped out. And I think this, by setting the policy and letting the public know we have a policy, maybe it would help encourage them to want to contribute. And so that's really why I brought it up and really what I'll be, make it, what I wanna make a motion is, is just to instruct the staff to review it and come back with a facility named, naming rights policy and any updates to the current sponsorship policy we have. named naming rights policy and any updates to the current sponsorship policy we have. So that's why I put this on the agenda. If anybody's got any comments?
I agree with Todd. I think that's a great idea. I don't know what we have currently. I don't know, Hayden, do you, do we, what do we have as a policy? What do we have?
Good evening, friends. Yeah, so we do have a policy that kind of spells out kind of what we're looking for and also what we're not looking for, right? So if Budweiser came and said, hey, we want to sponsor the facility. Right now, there are rules that say you cannot because it's not really jiving with what we're, what we have. So I have no issue reviewing that. You know, we review policies and procedures all the time to kind of deliver the best to the community, so.
Well, I would like to see what our policy is now and I agree. I think you're, I think that's all moving in the right direction. I think what we need to do, if we're talking about a community center, is, I think the first thing we need to do is get a, have something to show. In other words, have a building or have an idea that you could approach an atrium or a novant or somebody who could really put up some big dollars other than, you know, and I get it. We want to do bricks and benches and stuff like that, too. We can do, you know, for the little. What we need is big.
But, you know, and I agree. So what you're gonna see is say is, you know, they can work on it and we don't have to bring them over, but it'd be nice to have a design to show.
Yeah, we need a, we need a design of a building to show them.
That makes sense.
And then that way, you know, if it, let's dream big for a minute, okay? Because I'm gonna dream big for a minute. So if we set up that building and it's sitting out on where the proposed community center would be, but it was a big, beautiful building. And, and think of the, think if the rights of it were atrium or novant. And think of the health, the healthy things that are in that facility that they would be so proud of to be a part of. And these are all the selling points that you want to sell and brings all this selling to. And who knows how much money we're gonna get? But, you know, just keep working towards, you know, wouldn't it be nice if we just found somebody to pay for the doggone thing?
That's what I'm talking about.
And we don't, and we don't need, you know, to, you know, go looking for money. But, you know, that's, I'm talking dreaming big and let's do that. I think that's a great idea. I think let's look at.
Can we just get a head nod to kind of instruct staff to move in this direction?
Sure. I think everybody would agree.
You know, we don't need a motion, but just a head nod to, you know, we're moving in this direction.
And just, just to clarify, you know, staff is really great at sponsoring events and field banners and things like that, right? Takes a lot of work, takes a lot of time to curate that relationship.
I just, I just put that in there as kind of a template.
Sure, sure.
You know, I mean, I'm sure other towns have them too and, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, yeah, you know, I think we're on the same page here as far as.
And I'd be willing to go, and I know we're getting off subject here, but we've been talking about a community center, is let's jump in the car and I've been to lots of them. Let's start going to them and looking, getting ideas from them. I mean, that's a, I'd love to get some ideas of things we can never afford or can't afford and some that we can, just to look at them, just to see what we can and can't do. But I think that's a good idea, Todd. I'll agree with you. Let's get, let's get started on that. And let's try, let's move in the same direction. Let's work together on this. So we got a nod of heads, do it. And can you bring the?
I thought he made a motion.
Oh, did he? Did you make a motion?
No, we just got a nod of heads. We just got a consensus. We just did a consensus.
Well, it's just a consensus.
You know.
But if you'll bring the, what we have now, I'm sorry. Then let us look at it.
We can email that to y'all tonight. It's right on our website. Two things before we leave this topic.
I'm sorry, can I do that?
I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead, Tom.
Did he say we already, I mean, I think in the thing, I mean, people can already sponsor a bench and different items already, correct?
Yeah, there's.
But can they, can they, can they like, can they like put their name on a room or, I didn't think that was part of the policy.
I don't think it goes that deep, does it, Hayden?
You want to come back up?
Yeah, come on back up.
I'm just a quick yes or no. Because I don't know, you know? Someone wants to, I mean, you know, we got like, we got a NFL quarterback from Indian Trail. I mean, maybe one day his family like to pay and make that the Sam Howe football field over there or something, you know? I mean, I think there's a lot of opportunities here for different things, not just the community center. So, I mean, is that something that we possibly could do now?
Yes.
Okay, that's, you answered my question.
Thank you.
I will mention two things. The community center in Selma, I lived through that. It's actually a WPA building built in 1939. And they sold a lot of bricks. That was one of the things.
Original wood floor still in there.
Yeah, I've been in it multiple times. Believe me. They got a USDA loan to pay for it.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
The other thing I want to mention, because Abby and I have had some conversations about naming rights, that once you get in, you know, it's one thing to name a room or some of the small, you know, buy brick, you've all seen them. But when you start to get into something like naming a whole new facility, that cranks it up to a whole new level with a lot of polish more than, hey, would you like to do this? So we appreciate the suggestion. I'm sure Hayden will do just a fabulous job looking at that and he and I can talk about that moving forward. You got your manager's report. You see that. Only a couple of items I want to touch on that is we're wrapping up our paving for 2223. We're rolling into 2324. The auditors have been here. Good reports. They are either ahead of schedule or on schedule. They haven't identified any problems that I've been aware of and I know our finance folks have been in close contact. We are in the process of completing the budget book and we're working through that. Our Park and Rec Department is a very hardworking department and we're wrapping up our summer camps and we've had an increase from 425 last year to 527. They're doing all of that with the same staff. I sent you some information earlier in the week about the workload on the demands on our fields. I think it's gone up 62% in two years and so we're, we are staying really busy in that department.
Couple more things I want to talk about.
A few years ago, you approved a CIP. Some of you were on the board, some of you may not have been on the board, whom we looked at, where do we want to be in five years? And it's time to re-up it. And so I've been working with the leadership team, Adam, Todd, Jim, Brandy and Hayden, to look at several things going through 2030. And so what we're looking at, what projects do we have on the books that are fully funded? What projects do we have that aren't funded? What resources are available? How much money's available? Where's our cash flow? You heard Jim talk about earlier. You know, our first, our next series of bonds will be paid off in 2028, so we're looking at cash flow. And what are the timelines? What are the timelines on our public works facility? What is the anticipated timelines on the community center so that we can start to make strategic decisions? If we do have to borrow money, what are our best options? Whether it's a bond, whether it's installment finances and things like that. We've also spent a lot of time talking about sidewalks. You heard it here tonight. The importance of connectivity, you know, both from the CRTPO folks. So we've spent some time, I think we've got $3 million worth of sidewalks that we haven't started on yet. And so we've started to look at that. And so what I'm telling you is sometime within the next 60 days, we're gonna have that project completed. And we want to sit down with you individually, walk you through it. This is where we, we recommend you go through 2030 and we're gonna ask that you vote on it, much like you did a few years ago. And in 2020, probably 2028, you're gonna need to update that again, probably to 2035. If you listen to the CRTPO folks last night, they're talking about a plan when I'll probably be dead and gone, 2055 or so. So as the city moves forward, as our projects get bigger, as they get more complex, we have to look out further down the road and figure out what's coming up, what's the cost gonna be, what's our strategy for addressing that? So it's a good exercise. Speaking of public works facility, I think all of you know that we now own that property. We saved a boatload of money. It took a lot of work. Adam's been working on it for three years. I've been working on it with Adam for three years. He's been doing the heavy lifting and we've had some other staff members involved in that. It's roughly 16 acres, three of which are wetlands, so we can't use that. Last step in the process is it's going to the DOT board in September for an access right on the ramp, but not too far down. We've looked at that. We're gearing up as we speak to have a survey done and to have a phase one, much like we do all the projects. I think we did have to pay the grand old fee of $31, so we really got a bargain on that. At your next meeting, we will give you a further update on where we are with the public works facility. And those estimates are included in the 2030 CIP. Tonight, you approved some settlements on some of the properties for Indian Trail Road. One of them, well, several of them, I think, are the Hassan Blas Donus properties, which is a major, major, major milestone. We've got one of those properties, we're getting an updated title search. Once we get those done, we're immediately gonna record the deeds, we will wire her the money, and then we're gonna get an asbestos person in there to look at that building and start to take care of that building because the building needs to come down. So we're working on that. One of the things Mayor and I have talked about, and I've talked about it with y'all for several years, is to have a legislative agenda. A lot of places do it. They come together as a group. What do we want to talk to the legislature about? What do we want them to consider on our behalf? We've talked about the problem with the stormwater tax in the past, that you can't collect that like you can property tax. We've talked about roads, and they've been good to us with roads. We've talked about community centers, but what are some other things? So I would recommend that we have a workshop some, at some point the next month or so where we talk about what would we like them to, to work with us on and, more importantly, invite them so we can hear their ideas. Because when they come here, they often say, tell us what you need. Tell us, you know, how we can help you. So I think that would be a good exercise. The long session starts in January and that's where a lot of the work gets done. The short session is when they're supposed to tweak the budget, but they typically don't do it. They take on more things than that. The other thing we've talked about over time is taking a field trip. Councilmember Barber mentioned Morrisville a little while ago. In the 1980s, Morrisville was a crossroads and it's not a crossroads anymore. Holly Springs was a crossroads. It's not a crossroads anymore. Very similar to this town. If there's interest, I just need a nodding of the head, we would love to organize a field trip to go meet with the mayor and the manager and some of the key folks to talk about their story. What did they feel like they did right? What did they feel like they would do differently? And so I extend that as an invitation. Think about it. Let me know something, yea or nay, in the next few days and we will certainly get that going. I know the manager of Holly Springs says he would love to have us come up and visit with him. The hour is late and let me just run through just a couple more minor things. You heard CRTPO, they have their proposals out. At your next meeting, we will come to you with a list of projects we would like to submit applications for. We've had a really good success rate with CRTPO. We think that will continue. We will also give you an update on the occupancy taxes on the November agenda. You allowed us to hire a firm. They've come up with a great tagline and we want to talk about where we are and where does it go. We can only educate folks on what the issue is, but we're gonna need your help in talking to the citizens. As I mentioned, there'll be a public works update and there'll probably be some other things that pop up. I've given a long report, but that's all the report that I have and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I got a quick question is, you mentioned sidewalks. Where does this, where does the money come from for sidewalk repair? Because the budget, years ago, we had some come through the power bill expense, but this budget had zero. So where does the sidewalk repair money come from now?
We would, we've had some conversations on that. We would probably take it out of the general fund. We'll find some money in there to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Todd?
Yeah. Sorry, Mike wasn't aware of this. I found out today that our, our new contract, resurfacing contract, they're actually starting this Friday in the Bills of Sun Valley subdivision. So I've, I've emailed the HOA president and the management company, so they're aware they're gonna be out there. Abby's copied on those emails. And that's what we try to do, just let you know, every time they go into a subdivision, we try to contact the HOA and the management company, let them know that they're coming, as best as we can, as far as that goes. So just FYI. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Go ahead, Melanie. I think it's you, isn't it?
Councilwoman Buholick. I'm not gonna talk very long at all. Thank you, everyone who came out and everybody who left, at least y'all came in and spoke to us and let us know your feelings about things. I always feel like it's really important and hope we do have more people come in. Adopt a cop was successful despite our rained out event. We got lots of baskets for the officers delivered over to the Sheriff's Department. I want to thank Mayor Cohn and Councilman Alsa Brooks for both volunteering to make a basket, as well as, you know, all the people in our community that did. Other than that, have a wonderful night and we will see you next time.
Councilmember Barber.
Happy birthday, Jim. Don't look a day over 59. Anyway, I'd like to thank everybody that was involved and helped out with the back to school bash. Special thanks to our Mr. Kramer and our Parks and Recs Department for donating all the food for the event. I know that when I went to the training and all that, they really appreciated that. Evidently, they didn't have as many donations this year, so it made a big difference, they said. Thank you. Bingo's back at the VFW due to the storm. They didn't have it last week. If you're still interested in donating school supplies, this Sunday, First Baptist Church of Indian Trail is still taking school supplies if you want to donate. Also, I'd like to thank the, shout out to the Monroe Civitan Club. If you don't know, they build a lot of handicap ramps for people and they're doing one here in Indian Trail, so they don't just do Monroe. So I know, I know the families really appreciating that. They also have their annual, 14th Annual Golf Club Charity. Most of the proceeds go to the Wolf School, if you're familiar with the disability school here in Union County that also serves Indian Trail residents. But if you want information on the golf tournament, if you want to play, get a team or be our sponsor, just donate. It is September 5th at the Monroe Country Club. You can feel free to reach out to me if you want more information on that. Thank you, everybody, and God bless.
Councilmember Gay.
The time is late. We've talked enough. Time to go home. Everybody be careful.
Councilmember Alsa Brooks.
Ms. Juanita, Mr. Drummond, Mr. Falkenberry, thank you for hanging out this whole time. Everybody else have a good night.
Councilmember Ambergy.
Happy birthday, Jim. Happy belated birthday to Brandy. Your birthday was last month, yes? July 5th? What, 7th? Well, happy belated birthday. God bless everyone. Thank you.
Trina had a birthday Sunday.
Oh, Trina.
Trina!
Happy birthday!
I'm 21 again, right?
You know, we have Trina and Jim and Brandy. I think we ought to break out in a happy birthday song. Do y'all, are y'all agree, will y'all agree to sing to that? Okay? A one, a two, a three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Trina. Brandy and Jim to you.
Okay, man, hey, it's hard, it's hard not to close on that, but I want to thank you, Crystal, for the Adopt a Cop, and all you did, I was there, I, I stopped by your place on Thursday, uh, and, and dropped some stuff off, uh, it was a, it was a, a different meeting tonight, and I appreciate we got through it, and, uh, hopefully we move forward. Thank you all for coming, and, uh, thank staff for everything you do, I tell you all, I maybe not said this lately, but you are definitely a talented, wonderful group of people, and, um, I'm just tickled to death that you are here, because you make us, and all of us, look better. Melanie, that includes you, too, you're, 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 you're very good at what you do, and, uh, Mike, thank you for your hard work, so, with that being said, Andy, don't, don't let me, Andy, you do a great job also.
I know, I'm just.
Okay, well, you are, all right, God bless everybody, and can I get a motion to close?
Motion adjourned.
All in favor? unanimous.